Okay, we are live on YouTube.
Great, thank you, and welcome back to the June 28, 2022 Public Hearing and Public Meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We will be beginning this afternoon with item, Public Hearing, item number three, and this hearing is being held via Zoom. If you would like to testify on any of the hearing items today, please join our meeting at the estimated time on our, that's shown on our agenda, which can be found on our website. And please note, we are about a half an hour behind schedule now, but that can change. So try to stick with the time that's on the website, and you should be able to be here whether we catch up a little or stay behind. If you would just like to watch the proceedings, you may do so on our YouTube channel. And with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala, to take us through the afternoon agenda.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. We'll start back up with Public Hearing Item Number Three, LPC 22-06037, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 485, Lot 40, 468 Broome Street, in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is an Italianate-style store-in-law building built in 1860, and the application is to paint the ground floor of the building.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Alberto, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen. And then you can advance the slides. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Hello, everybody. My name is Alberto Anastasio, Principal of Anastasio Architects, and the architect and designer for a retail store called Golden Goose on 468 Broome Street. Can I, Georgia, how do I start the slide?
Advance the slides using your arrow key.
Okay. All right. Okay, so this is a building located in Soho in the Cast Iron District. It's building, this building was built in 1860, and has some cast iron feature mostly at the ground floor, which has a column and cornice in cast iron. Currently, the building has, it's painted, the whole building is painted on a beige-toned color, with the upper floor being sandstone, as the details of the, of the columns and the trims. And whereas the base of the building has a two-tone color, one part of the building is painted beige, the other part, which is this part, is painted light gray color. The scope of this, of our intervention is to repaint the, the bottom part, this part of, of the building, a gray color in contrast with, with the upper floor. This is also to unify the bottom, the color at the bottom of the, of the building. So. Okay, so these are the drawings of the proposed, proposed job, unify the color, also considering that some part of the building, like this bottom part, is already painted black, darker. And so we'll be painting the cast iron feature, like columns, cornice, and sign bands, as well as some trims around the windows and wooden doors. Okay, these are some pictures of, on your left, how it looks, the building looks right now, and, and on your right, you'll see a little rendering of the proposed color. This is a quick, a quick presentation of similar color schemes that we see throughout the area, where the commercial floor, ground floor is in contrast with the upper floors. It's something that is, we feel like it's kind of common in, in the area. We also, we also looked at some report, a paint study founded by our preservationist. There was, I think it was, this article was by Cynthia Wright, it was, was written, I believe, in the 90s, in the 70s of the 1900s. And, and it goes through a little bit of a history of paint in the Cast Iron District. And it explained how cast iron represented the industrial and economic progress, wealth, and grandeur of the, of the past. And it started like, when, this was in, in the late 800, it was a new material for construction. So it started like mimicking the, the masonry construction, but had a, had a major, major quality that was that the cast iron needed to be painted, as opposed to masonry that doesn't need to be painted. So it started, but at that time, color, the industrial, the industry of the paint, the paint industry was not developed yet. So color was basically, they were like just mostly white color based on lead, and, and later on, also zinc came available, became available. So it was mostly done, painted this color. It was also resembling somehow the marble, but also was a technical issue that it was the, mostly the main color available. But by, you know, in the next 20.
Okay, has anyone else lost sound?
We're just, okay, manufactured, and, and became available commercially. So, and, and also the, the material will start to be seen in a different way, also architecturally, so, meaning that it has its own, its own character, rather than mimicking the masonry. And it will start like, more, more color will start developing. One trend by the end of the 1800, by the 70s or the 1800, it started becoming very popular, which was to have a contrast on the ground floor with darker color, which was considered beneficial to the commercial, because it would highlight the merchandise better. And also, it would, it would not reduce the, or damage the sheen of the, of the color. So basically, the darker color was lasting better the, the elements. And, and that's why it was preferred on, on, on the ground floor. Other, other reason for becoming like popular, a darker floor, commercial floor, was also that architecturally, it would, it would give like a more massive presence at the, at the ground floor, so that would balance a lighter look for the, for the upper floors. So, so based on this, we, we were proposing, you know, this change of color, and thinking that it, it's in the, it's in the spirit of, of, of how the cast iron developed over the years, and also the, the character of the, the district as is now.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have questions? I don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Sonia Gior to take us through the testimony.
Great, thank you. Our first speaker will be Helen Freeman. Helen, I'm promoting you to panelists now. And if you're going to unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, Helen Freeman, Historic District Council. HTC finds this proposal to be fully inappropriate. The proposed color will detract from the building's otherwise monochromatic composition and draw unnecessary attention to itself. This is particularly problematic, given that 464, 466, and 468 are meant to be read as a single composition. A more complete presentation of the building's entire facade and its neighboring context would show this discordant condition clearly. We ask the Commissioners to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Christina Conroy. Excuse me. Christina, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And you should be able to unmute your line. If you could please state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, good afternoon Commissioners, I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society in New York. Now, it is only paint that most reversible of changes, and one which has no physical effect on the building's historic fabric, but there is a reason the Commission has always regulated change of paint color. Color can have a profound effect on the application of a building and on a building's relationship to its neighbors in a historic district. 468 Broome is a masonry building above the ground floor, stone on the Broome Street facade, and brick with the same stone used as trim on the Green Street facade. The cast iron ground floor base is clearly meant to match the color of the stone. In fact, the point of cast iron architecture was to imitate stone. Painting the base of this building in a contrasting color to the stone above not only introduces a significant horizontal discontinuity in the design, but also negates the whole idea of a cast iron front designed to imitate, imitate the stone of the upper floors. We urge denial of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do not have any other speakers signed up or any hands raised. So I'll note that we did receive one additional letter in opposition, and that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends denial of this application as compromising of the historic design of the building. And they recommend that any modification of the color of the ground floor be of a very light color, in order to preserve the unity of the facade, and recommend that any work on the facade include a careful conservation and restoration of the fabric of the building. I'll turn it back to you, Chair Carol.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'd like to ask the applicant if you'd like to respond to any of the comments we've heard.
Well, yes, that's, one of the comments that was definitely, was definitely pointed out, of the uniformity of color between the ground floor and the upper floor. That was definitely a trend in, during the, during the late 60s or 50s. But this trend, at one point, it also, there was also a different trend developing and very popular in the, in the neighborhood, that it was actually create, purposely create a contrast between the commercial base and, and the rest of the building. There was, it was, it was due to a change of how the material was perceived. In, in the very early time, it was, cast iron was interpreted as a, to replicate the, the masonry elements. But then it developed in, in its own, its own personality and its way of interpreting, and definitely creating a contrast between the commercial. It was, it became by the end of the century, in the, in the 70s, 80s, and 90s of the 1800, it became like a major trend throughout the, the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, I'm going to send you all a request to unmute, so that we can move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. Okay, Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Go move.
And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. And, you know, I think we do know that the earlier buildings in, the fully cast iron buildings that are early to mid to late 19th century, where the general rule of thumb, we're meant to imitate stone, as we've heard in testimony, and we're often painted a limestone color. I think the later buildings, which were masonry with some cast iron piers at the bottom, often we have found in our experience, had sometimes dark colors. And I have seen maybe once in all of the applications I've seen, a cast iron facade where the base was a darker color than above. So I'm not, I think it was sort of a, from my experience and exception, not a major trend. But I'm going to ask Commissioner Devonshire to lead this conversation. He would have more experience with the evolution of paint colors in this district.
Well, a lot, Sarah. No, it's, had, had the applicant said, in this particular case, we had finishes analysis done, and we developed the stratigraphy of all of the color schemes throughout the history of this building, and we determined that there was X, Y, and Z, and so we're using that one. Then I might have been swayed, but lacking that evidence, I, I have to go back to what I have learned in my, you know, 40-some years of dealing with painted buildings in New York, and that is that the cast iron bases typically were painted to match the color of the masonry above. In some cases, they, the paint was actually sand painted, so it was textured to feel like the masonry above. And so I am not in favor of this application.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I think the, I would defer to the rest for the, the color, whether it should be lighter. But other than that, I have no comment.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah, I agree. I, I think the color should harmonize better with the limestone.
Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree that it should harmonize better with the limestone.
Commissioner Gustafson?
I think Commissioner Devonshire is underselling himself. I believe he has 60 years of experience in the field. But in, in any event, I, there's also, I think the, I agree with the fellow commissioners, I think there's the additional question of whether this, this is two different colors on the same building. In other words, that we're, we're painting only a portion of the, of the base of the building, and it's making it mismatched. So, so it's got a couple of problems.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I, I think I'm in agreement in the absence of a, of a paint sample that shows that there was really a much darker color here. There should be lighter color.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Devonshire and others, that, you know, without a paint sample to demonstrate that this is historically a darker color, that we really, it really would be more appropriate to have a lighter color.
Okay. And Commissioner Goldblum?
No disagreement.
Okay, so I think we all agree that it, short of having a paint analysis, paint analysis that shows a different layering at the ground floor and portion of it at the, of the building, that we think that it should be a light color to harmonize with the rest of the building, and to be more harmonious with the color of limestone. So Commissioner Devonshire, would you make that motion?
Okay.
All right, sir.
That's okay.
In the matter of LPC 22-06037, 468 Broome Street, in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, an application to paint the ground floor of the building. I just threw myself off the page. I recommend approval with modifications, that the work will be reversible and not conceal, conceal any significant architectural features. However, I find that 464 and 468 Broome Street was originally constructed as a single building, nine base divided into three triple base sections and ground floor regularly divided by columns. Therefore, applying a finish to the cast iron and only the westernmost ground floor bays will, will call undue attention to the storefront, and disrupt the overall monochromatic composition of the building's base. And the cast iron facade components were typically finished to resemble stone. Therefore, the black finish at the base of the building will detract from the brick facade above. Therefore, the finish on the cast iron components of the building base should be revised to a lighter color that recalls or harmonizes with the limestone facade and adjacent storefront bays, or that the applicant conduct a finish analysis to determine the original painted color of the cast iron.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
With nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
So, please continue to work with the staff, and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is Public Hearing Item Number Four, LPC 22-11131, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 633, Lot 10, 332 West 11th Street, in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a warehouse and garage building designed by Thomas Stiles and built in 1905. The application is to alter the ground floor of the front facade, replace windows, demolish the back of the building, and construct a new rear facade, and construct rooftop additions.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Michael, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen, and then you'll be able to advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. The team may begin. Please state your name for the record before you do so.
Good afternoon, Chair Carol and Commissioners, can you hear me? Wonderful seeing you today. I'm Manakshi Srinivasan from Quamer Levin, Natales and Frankel, representing 332 West 11th Holding LLC, owners of the property. I'm here with Ward Dennis from Higgins and Quaysbarth, and Michael Gilmore and Brandon Bensing, Wedle and Gilmore, the architects for the project. I'd like to provide you with a very quick overview before turning it over to Ward and to Michael. We're very excited to present what we think is a modest and respectful adaptive reuse of 332 West 11th Street, located in Greenwich Village Historic District. The existing building is a former warehouse and stable built in 1905. Over the years, the building has been altered and is currently occupied by a five-story and cellar public parking garage. The commercial use is an existing nonconformance, which would otherwise not be permitted under the existing R6 zoning district. The garage interrupts the primarily residential character of the south side of West 11th Street. Our application is to convert the first of the fifth floors to residential use, add, alter the fifth floor windows on the primary facade, add new infill at the base of the building, remove portion of the rear to provide a rear yard, add a sixth floor and small penthouse, and update mechanicals, elevators, stairs, and bulkheads. The project also involves a significant amount of restoration work will be, which will be reviewed at staff level. All work that we're proposing is permitted under the R6 zoning. We believe that this project is appropriate, both in the context of the existing building, as well as the historic district, as it will bring back the handsome and distinctive facade, establish a historically sensitive and improved ground floor that will enhance the streetscape. It would allow for more light and air in otherwise compromised rear yard context, and it would include a carefully masked and designed visible addition that will fit within the varied styles, heights, and route scape of West 11th Street, as well as the historic district. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Manakshi. Good afternoon Commissioners, Ward Dennis with Higgins, Quaysbarth and Partners. I will take you through some of the history and appropriateness, and then hand it over to Michael and Brandon to take you through the design. As Manakshi mentioned, this project is located on West 11th between Greenwich and Washington. You can see it highlighted in the map on the left. We are at the west side of the Greenwich Village Historic District. Just to the south across Perry Street is the Extension District. And this is the part of the district that is much more mixed industrial character, with many larger buildings similar to ours, which was originally built as a stable, and now used as a garage. Next, please, Brenda. So on the left is the existing condition, on the right is the proposed work. As Manakshi mentioned, we are doing significant facade restoration, working with staff on that. That includes substantial masonry repairs, replacement of windows to match historic, and installation of a new sheet metal cornice matching the historic, as well as some additional work on the sides and rear. The public hearing scope before you is for modifications at the ground floor, to create a residential entrance with a garage to the right. We are proposing to relocate the cast iron column that is in the center of the building to the east, to the left on this elevation, to create a symmetrical base at the bottom of the building. We are also proposing to replace the fifth floor windows with single light, one-over-one windows without the fan light transom above. And above that, on the roof, is the proposed addition with bulkheads above. Not shown in this picture, but you will see it soon, is a removal of a portion of the rear of the building for light and air. Next, please, Brenda. So, the building was built in 1905. It was designed by Thomas Stiles. It was constructed as a stable for the Foster Scott Ice Company. And if you look at the tax photo on the far left, the 1940s tax photo, you can see at the roof that there was construction at the roof of this building, similar in scale, although actually closer to the cornice of the building, to what we're proposing for our sixth floor addition. We have not been able to determine exactly what this was, but we believe it was related to its history as part of the Ice Company. The designation photo at the center and the tax photo at the left show the garage conversion. This happened in 1928. And we think at that time, the ground floor was modified, and that there would have been a cast iron pier at the center of that left bay that was removed. We have done probes and confirmed that that, that pier is not there. And you can also see that the cornice at that section of the building pushes out a little bit. So we think that there was something else that was happening here. We are proposing to remove this later addition of storefronts and create a symmetrical base at the bottom. On the right is On the right is the nineteen eighty-five tax photo with the infilled windows, which we will be opening up. I should also note that there are some violations on this building for signage and lighting installed with the facade. All of that will be removed as part of our restoration scope and those violations will be removed. Next, please. So this is looking in a little more detail at the ground floor. You can see on the left photo that there are currently four cast iron piers and historically there would have been a fifth about where it says auto detailing on the left there underneath the brick pier above. You can also see the modifications to the storefront cornice that will be removed and that cornice will be restored. And as part of our proposal, we are proposing to remove the center cast iron pier, move that to the left, which will create the symmetrical base at the ground floor. Next, please. And this is a photo showing the fifth floor windows. The existing one-over-one windows are aluminum replacements. We propose to remove those and the fan lights, the wood fan lights above, and replace them with full arched windows, one-over-one. Next, please. Now, in terms of the history, we have looked at some of the precedents and background for Thomas Styles' building, and this page shows three of his buildings throughout the city. One in the Greenwich Village, sorry, one in the Gansford Historic District on the left. Of note in these and what we're learning from these is, one, the two buildings on the left, you'll note that they're full arched windows at the attic story at the top without fan lights. So clearly, it's, it's a precedent in terms of his designs. We also are looking at particularly the building on the right and the building in the center for how he is treating the windows and opening up the, the building to more light, which you will see when we get to the rear elevation. And last, I would note here that all three of these buildings, a little bit hard to see from the some of the stuff in the foreground, but all three of these buildings do have symmetrical bases at the bottom. So I think clearly the asymmetrical base that we have in our building is a later alteration. Next, please. And we did also look at other garage stable buildings in Greenwich Village, most if not all of which were designed with symmetrical bases at the ground floor. Next, please. In terms of this area of the district itself, these are photos from the immediate blocks surrounding our buildings. As I mentioned, this is a very mixed industrial and residential character. You have greater deal of juxtapositions of taller and shorter buildings. You have, as you can see at the top left, visible rooftop additions over side elevations. Also at the bottom right is a West Eleven Street building, which has a visible rooftop addition directly across the street from us. Next, please. And this is also the condition on, on our block itself. This is a view of one thirty-one Perry Street, which is a building immediately to the south of us. Also constructed as a stable and later converted to a warehouse. Nineteen seventy-eight, the commission approved a visible rooftop addition that you can see in the photo at the left as part of a conversion of this building to residential use. And next, please. And we see this in the historic maps as well, the transition of the neighborhood from smaller scale buildings. Even in the earlier years in eighteen sixty-two and eighteen ninety-five, those green rear lot buildings indicate stables and industrial uses. But by the early twentieth century, we start to see much larger footprint buildings, taller buildings starting to come in. And by the time we get to the nineteen fifties, map on the bottom right, there are a number of garages, warehouses and much larger buildings within this block. And next, please. So in terms of the appropriateness of a visible rooftop addition, we think that the scale, footprint, height and massing of this building and the context of the larger industrial buildings in this part of the district do make a visible rooftop addition appropriate. This is similar to findings that the commission has made in the past. The bottom right, you can see the West Eleven Street, three forty-three West Eleven Street, which was approved in nineteen eighty-two, and then just above the turquoise box, you can see the large addition on the roof of one thirty-one Perry Street, which was approved in nineteen seventy-eight. We think that what we are proposing is similar in appropriateness to these and similar to what the commission has seen in elsewhere in this district and in districts such as Tribeca and Dumbo, where we have these larger industrial buildings. Next, please. And with that, I will turn it over to Michael and Brandon to take you through the design.
Thanks, Ward. Can you guys hear us? Okay. This is Michael Gilmore and Brandon Benzink with Weddell Gilmore Architects, and we'll just take you through some of the modifications beyond the extensive restoration process that we're going through. We saw the challenge was to create a design for the new portions that was harmonious, not only with the historic industrial nature of the building, but also the residential use that it's proposed for, as well as the residential character of the neighborhood and the street where we're located. Starting on the ground floor. Starting on the ground floor, you'll see the cornice that sits above the cast iron columns that Ward noted. The existing, it's existing on the right half of the facade. The left half is being recreated to match up with that. The cast iron column that was located in the center, we're proposing to locate here to, to create that symmetrical facade, referential to the Thomas Styles examples that we looked at extensively. Further, we're using, in looking at his, his other projects, we noted that there was fairly dark colors were used on the base of most of the buildings that we saw by him. So we're proposing a warm gray color, not black. We're trying to represent that well in the rendering. The entrance to the residences is symmetrical in the center of the building, also with a slightly different palette, a little bit more of a bronze color and some wood doors with robust moldings and raised panel to be more residential in nature, similar to what you see around the neighborhood. Flanked to the right and left are the garage entrance to the commercial parking in the basement on the right, and on the left is the egress door, fire department connections and additionally, you can see the existing curb cut extends almost two-thirds or three-quarters of the way across the facade as there's three garage entrances currently. We're proposing to minimize that and place it just in front of the garage doors on the right to create a more pedestrian-friendly situation along the street and also make room for a, a street tree in the center. Here in these sections, you'll notice the very top, you can see this is the existing cornice that we're extending across where it has been removed. This is the profile of the existing cast iron columns, and we're also creating a line of, that creates a transom. This is another item that we picked up from some of the Thomas Styles examples that we looked at. Quite often when he had fifteen, sixteen, eighteen foot ground floors, he would break it up with a transom above those lines, and we are doing something similar to create a proportion that feels in character with the street and the residential use of the building. This, the rear facade is currently highly deteriorated and in disrepair. On the lower left, you can see our facade at the cellar level here. This is the adjacent property, one thirty-one Perry Street, which is directly behind us. At the cellar level, it steps back five feet. This building goes straight up. So there's, right, right now, there's a five feet at the cellar level. We're proposing to infill this with grade and bring grade up to the first floor. This is looking up at the deteriorated nature of our existing facade. And this is looking down. You can see there's not much light and air in here. We're proposing to remove this facade and push it back ten feet to allow more light and air into this, into the donut. You can see on the left, the existing facade. This is the cellar that we looked at in that picture a moment ago, where we're infilling it up to great, up to ground level. And then we're proposing to, where we cut the existing brick, to leave that as a bookend, where we're going to infill in between that with ganged windows reminiscent of some of the Thomas Styles examples that Ward pointed out a few minutes, a few moments ago. Further, this is where we're filling in this, this yard. This is the existing foundation in the basement, and the existing building goes straight up from there. So we're proposing to take ten feet off. And then when we get up to the rooftop addition, which we'll get into in more detail in a few minutes, you'll see that's also stepped back an additional fifteen feet, bringing a lot more light and air in to the space. The side elevations, important to note here is the ten feet that we're proposing to remove. We're also refinishing the side elevations and adding some windows, which are being reviewed at staff level. You can also see the, the building directly to our east. In the back, there's still a two-story structure back there, and you'll notice when we look at the areaway map, currently, there's ten feet building to building, five feet on our property, five feet on the adjacent property. We're proposing to increase our rear yard to fifteen feet, creating a twenty-foot rear yard back there. And this is that two-story addition. So actually, the donut really opens up through this whole area, which you'll see in some axons momentarily. Getting to the rooftop addition, we feel that a visible rooftop addition is appropriate in this neighborhood. It's, it's approved not only directly behind us, but across the street and regularly throughout the area. To meet with current zoning, we will be configuring its twenty feet setback from the front facade. You'll notice in those historic references, there used to be a structure on the roof. It sat in that twenty-foot front, which is no longer allowed by zoning. We're also taking a fifteen-foot setback in the back in addition to moving the board, the building forward. You also see on this, the, this is the egress stair coming up as required by code to the roof level of the addition, and the elevator override also coming up to the roof level as required by code. We're also proposing a penthouse space directly behind there, which does not affect the height of the elevator override or the egress stairs, and is really very minimally visible from any location. We are proposing these terraces to be very green garden terraces, and we purposely have not been presenting it that way so that you can focus specifically on the architecture, but we think it's important that you know that that's how it's going to, that's our plans for it. And in fact, just down the street at the corner of Eleventh and Greenwich, we, we did with the same landscape, same landscape architect, we worked on a rooftop addition that we elevated above a pitched roof, added the bulkhead coming up, and also added mechanical units up there, which are screened from visibility on the street. You can actually see this project from the rooftop of three thirty-two West Eleven Street. This is it right here, and you can see the rooftop additions over here. Then we have just a series of axons from different angles around the, around the project. We'll move through those fairly quickly. You can see the egress stair coming up to the sixth floor, the elevator override that's required to come up to the sixth floor and the penthouse space that's tucked in behind them. This is the south side of it. So here's the fifteen-foot terrace on the back where we've pushed in, and you can see the additional space between the buildings there as well. From the other angle on the, on the south. From material palette, as mentioned, we, we're proposing to keep the upper windows of the building dark as they, as they currently are, and they appeared in all of those historic images, and then also creating a darker character to the street level, similar to the other Thomas Styles images that we saw before. So this is that dark color that we're proposing on those windows. This is the front facade existing brick, the sidewall existing brick, and then this is our palette for the new additions that we're proposing, a series of bronze-colored paints, wood stained in, in character with the neighborhood, limestone that exists on the building that we're proposing to match for the copings and some other areas. And then the brick, we're proposing a buff brick, so proposing a fairly warm palette for those additions. Here you can see these additions in straight elevation. This is the new cornice that we're adding to the building. And then beyond it, you'll see the sixth floor that exists here, that we're proposing to be located here. The elevator override and the egress stair coming up to that sixth level. The south elevation, you see the penthouse space in the, on the rear tucked in behind. Side elevation, again, the egress stair in the foreground and the elevator override in the background, again, going to the, to the sixth floor roof as required. And from the other side. Here in the plan, oops. Here in the plan of the sixth floor, you can see the twenty-foot setback along Eleventh Street on, on the north, and the fifteen-foot rear yard plus the fifteen-foot setback at the sixth floor on the south. The egress stair and the elevator, which continue up to the roof is required by code, and here's the penthouse that's tucked in behind them. Brandon's gonna take us through a few things on the sections.
So a few of our guiding principles in this addition. We kept our mechanicals inboard, and in this space, kept a modest eight-foot succeeding height, which has allowed us to increase the glazing out of the perimeter of the building envelope and also reduce the height of the addition's cornice. You'll note that the structure here, we've minimized it. We're a little over twelve inches for our structure where we upset the beams into our slab. The additional fifteen inches or so for, for this overall assembly is in the slope of the roof, the required insulation, and then the walkable surface on the roof deck. Also noted in these sections is the step backs for the guardrails and such, creating some articulation to further break down the weight of that addition. We have the same philosophy for how we're dealing with mechanicals on the south facade. This is allowing us to get a little bit higher finished ceiling here at the building envelope, but it's still keeping the eight-foot-six modest ceiling height where our mechanicals are located at the penthouse and also at this sixth floor addition. On the east and west, we are proposing to extend closer to the property line. We have set back the addition enough to delineate what is the historic brick facade from the new, more contemporary industrial nature addition. And then this is our street view as it exists today in the upper image. You can see the varying scales of the facades along Eleventh Street. The dash line above that with the ghosted image is the height of the buildings on Perry Street directly south of us. The lower image shows our proposed addition and facade restoration work, both at the base and the cleaning up of the upper second to fifth floors. We feel that the portions are very much in character with the varying scales and also the heights of all the surrounding buildings on our block.
Then we have a few axons in context so that you can see it relative to the rooftops surrounding us. So here's our project proposed. You can see, not only are the rooftop gardens directly behind us and adjacent to us, but the areaway in the donut is quite green. A lot of buildings in there are covered in ivy, and we're trying to work in that same kind of context with the work that we're proposing. You can see here, looking towards the south, that's one thirty-one Perry that's behind us where we've created about twenty feet. You can see that that areaway really does get a lot more light and air going, going through there.
And then for our visibility, because of the varying heights of the adjacent neighborhood, we do have a visibility along Eleventh Street, going east and west in front of our facade. Directly across the street, the addition is not visible, and then we do have a few small windows along Greenwich Street and Perry. Uh, part of the visibility as you look from the east and west on Eleventh Street, uh, materiality, we're uh definitely trying to keep our materials fairly light to reduce the contrast at the sky. Um, as you can see, the, the existing building contrasts a lot more than the newer proposed buff materials, the brick of the elevator override here. Uh, moving further uh down the west side of what, further west on Eleventh Street. Um, again, a little bit more of this becomes visible until we get completely screened by uh the corner building. Um, also to note, the left side of these images is our rendered uh perspective of this and the right side is the same photo where we have the mock-up as it exists on the rooftop today. This is the small window on Perry Street, um. This is that one thirty-one addition, which you can't see the full height here. Uh, it's hard to tell in the mock-up, but you see the elevator override here of, in the distance. Uh, there is a small portion of that sixth floor addition cornice and then a very small portion of that penthouse space uh cornice that's visible. This is on Eleventh Street, east of our building. Um, this is uh mostly in line with that historical image from very early on in the presentation where there was the rooftop addition. Um, this definitely is one of the more visible spots of it. Uh, the difference between the historical image and this is we are pulling the addition back, that additional setback at facade and does not come straight up to the Eleventh Street. A little bit closer on Eleventh Street, as you can see, it changes a little bit. And then our small window on Greenwich Street that you can see our addition, you can see that the stair, uh, bulkhead here and then the penthouse addition here. One item to note is that this does not include any of the greenery we're proposing in these renderings. Um, we feel once that vegetation is in place, it'll be very harmonious. Um, both in scale, how the scale breaks down in this back areaway and then also in the, the greenery of the areaway as it works back, as you can see in the adjacent buildings. And then finally, as you work further east down Eleventh Street, you can see the neighboring buildings as they uh change in scale, mostly uh block the view of the overall addition. There is a small portion of that sixth floor cornice which is visible. Here in this left image, you can see it here in this mock-up, uh, but the override for the elevator and the stair are out of view uh, once you cross uh Greenwich Street here.
So in conclusion, we feel our design is appropriate because it's harmonious with the historic nature of the building and the residential character of the neighborhood and our proposed visible rooftop addition is consistent with other, the scale of other rooftop uh uh approved additions in the neighborhood and with that we'll open it up.
Okay, thank you very much. And we do have some questions. Commissioner Devonshire, please go ahead.
You indicated that the uh rear facade was in uh bad condition. What's the nature of the deterioration and do you have a structural engineer's report that indicates that it needs to be demolished?
We do not have a structural engineer's report. We've had, um, an envelope consultant that's uh starting to look at the issues. There is severe buckling with the brick. It is bowed out. Um, there is also that case with some of the, the front facade brick as well. That we're investigating where that buckling has occurred. It looks like it's water infiltration. Um, but it is something that is ongoing as far as the studying of those.
Um, you have only an envelope consultant, not a structural engineer.
They are on board too. Um, we're working with WSP. Um, they're both the envelope consultant and the structural engineer.
Great, thanks.
Um, I can also add to that, just in the uh photos of the rear, that photo looking down uh where you could see the bow in the rear wall, that was not camera distortion, that was a bow in the rear wall and you can see throughout the building all the way down to at least the second floor uh cracks, through cracks through the rear wall at most of the windows. So there, it is deteriorated. There is also uh the uh, the, the light and air requirements uh as well, so.
Okay, and so I, and you know, we have lots in lots of applications for garage buildings or other industrial buildings that are being converted to residential use. We have allowed the removal of the rear facade to provide legal light and air and to open it up, open up the green space. Um, but I guess the other question that we look at is whether or not there are any significant features on that rear facade. If you can speak to that, that would be great.
Yeah, I, I would say that the primary impetus here is not the condition of the rear wall, but rather requirements to get light and air and uh particularly since the building directly behind us also has a five-foot uh rear yard. Uh, the, the rear wall is, I think, a fairly typical rear wall of, of industrial loft building from the early twentieth century, uh punched window openings with segmentally arched uh uh headers and uh some steel shutters, uh not hundred percent steel shutters.
Thank you. All right, other questions? Okay, I don't see any other questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. We may have more questions after that. Um, so if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And as always, we'll start with anyone who signed up in advance. And with that, I will turn it over to Sonia Gior to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. So the first speaker is Helen Freeman and Helen, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And you should be able to unmute your line. If you could please say your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, sorry, we actually decided ultimately not to comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so that was actually the only sign up we had in advance, so I'll move to any hands raised. Um, Anna Markham, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Anna Markham and I am the Director of Research and Preservation for Village Preservation. I am speaking on behalf of the organization today. Village Preservation strongly objects to the size and visibility of the proposed rooftop addition at three thirty-two West Eleventh Street. The proposed addition would detract from the visual integrity of the existing building as well as mark a noticeable intrusion on the otherwise largely low-rise block. We will note that we do not have any objections to the proposed renovation of the facade of the existing building, which restores and enhances many elements of the building. However, this does not in any way justify the oversized proposed rooftop addition, which is visually intrusive and seriously alters the rhythm of the streetscape. It is highly visible and immediately draws the eye from multiple viewpoints in the surrounding area. We strongly urge that the proposed rooftop addition be made minimally visible and or greatly reduced in scale if it is to be allowed at all, particularly the elevator mechanical bulkhead. Um, this building is already one of the largest on the block and adding to its mass in this manner detracts from the visual integrity of the block within the Greenwich Village Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do not see any other hands raised at this time. So I'll note that we did receive three additional letters in opposition. And Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval of the front facade, provided that the residential entry doors be more substantial and of a historic character and that the color of the ground floor is considerably lighter than illustrated in the presentation. Uh, Manhattan Community Board Two also recommends approval of the demolition of the rear wall and a section of the sidewalls, recommends approval of the rear wall line lock windows and recommends denial of the three-level rooftop addition let it, unless it is reduced to the height of the proposed penthouse lowest level. I'll turn it back to you, Jared Farrell.
All right, thank you very much. So I'd like to turn back to the applicant team and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
Sure, I'll, I'll start. Uh, uh, first off, regarding the community board's comment on the lighter color at the base of the building, uh, as Michael and Brandon mentioned, uh, the intention there is a lightish gray color or a not a light gray, but not a black color. Uh, and we did adjust the rendering uh to more accurately reflect that after the community board meeting. Uh, when we presented it to them, uh, I think it looked more black and that is definitely not the intention and Brandon and Michael knows that in more detail if you like. Uh, with regard to the visibility of the rooftop addition, I think we have demonstrated that uh the history of this particular building with uh its history of rooftop accretions, uh, the, this building type in general in terms of uh past commissioner actions. Uh, and this part of the district, we do think that a visibly, a, a visible and designed addition is appropriate. Uh, I will note that when you look at the uh mock-up studies, uh, for the most part, when you get further away, the visibility is just of the front of the sixth floor addition. It's only in the uh third to half block or so directly uh across the street on West Eleventh where you start to see the stair and elevator overrides, uh, both of which we need in order to get access to the roof of that sixth, uh, sixth floor addition.
I think I would add that the community board mentioned that it was a three-story addition. It's in fact a one-story addition with overrides and a penthouse a space in the back. The penthouse space does not affect the height of the override or the egress stair. Those must go to the roof, uh, per fire department and code requirements.
Could you maybe just go back to the axon for a minute or the pers- the bird's eye view of the addition, just so we know what parts we're talking about? Okay. Anyone at this time? Okay, so you're.
Right here, this, this is our one-story addition here, the sixth floor on the existing rooftop level. The brick portion here are the two egress stairs, which must come up to the, the rooftop of the building, which we're proposing to be the sixth floor. And the elevator itself, um, has to come up to the sixth floor as well. And this is that little bit extra of that elevator override to make uh the machinery work. And then that, that penthouse was, does not determine the height of these two elements is tucked behind it there.
And this bulkhead also conceals the mechanical as well.
Yes, I, right, the, the override blocks the view of the mechanical units from that long view.
Well, we also, we also have the mechanical unit sort of sunk into the roof of the stair bulkhead.
Right. They're not visible from the street.
Okay.
Right boxes you see at the left.
All right, and from those longest views where you sort of have the most visibility, you're seeing the top of the one-story penthouse, the elevator, bulkhead and overrun. And do you act, do you see, I can't remember if you actually see that back penthouse as well.
This is mostly visible on Greenwich Street, that small window on Greenwich Street. Um, this upper corner here, this very upper corner is what's visible on Perry Street. Um, mostly, right, that house is not viewable um, on Eleventh Street.
The penthouse is visible through the slots from Greenwich and through the slot that's created by the one-story building on Perry Street. Otherwise, would not be visible at all.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Just following up on what you were saying, Sarah. Why does the elevator have to go to this roof? Are you using this roof as a c- community space or something?
It's just the fire department requirement for it to come to the rooftop.
For a multi-family.
Yeah, because it's a multi-family building over four stories, both all egress stairs and elevators must come to the rooftop.
Thanks.
Okay, and the Florida floor or Florida ceiling height of the penthouse, the one-story addition is?
We're at about nine-six here at this glass. When you get back into the mechanicals, we're at eight foot six.
All right, commissioners, any other questions? Okay, I'm starting to send you requests unmute so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. Right, and Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing is closed and we'll now begin our discussion. And um, as we, you know, know with, when we have approved adaptive reuse of former stable buildings in the village or industrial buildings as some of our industrial districts, we have allowed a certain amount of change to meet and facilitate, facilitate the new uses and, and meet the associated codes um that go along with it. And often those uh changes have included visible rooftop additions. Um, and applicants today have laid out the heights and setbacks and the views of this proposed addition. So we'll begin our comments. We have um, the ground floor, the windows, the arched openings where, where the fan light is being removed and the one over one arched windows are being put in. The penthouse portion of, of penthouse components which include the, the first floor, the elevator and stair bulkheads and overrun and then the penthouse at the back. And then the uh demolition of the rear facade and the new rear facade setback ten feet. So um, we'll start maybe at the base, the windows, the roof in the back or some variation of that, but we'll try to hit all components. All right, Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you start this one?
Sure. Um, I actually think that this is um in, in many ways a- appropriate. Um, so I'll start. Um, and I have a couple of kind of questions or concerns, but not very much. Um, I think I can accept um the changes to the facade, including and surprisingly for myself even because I'm thinking about it, the fan lights, which I think are, while they're distinctive feature, I don't think that their removal really um takes away from the experience of, of the facade or its historic qualities. And I think that the addition of the the cornice is, is, is nice, it's quaint, it's okay. Um, it, it's not n- necessary, but I think it is fine. Um, I have a few concerns about the color, I think, and the addition of the wood at the, at the front, um, fist, at the entry, but nothing that m- m- makes me think that I would not approve it. Um, the roof is um despite being visible, I think is actually acceptable setback. Um, I, I, the, the materiality, the color of the, of the brick that they're proposing is not which would be kind of ideal. And I'm not sure if I would want for it to be more in the gray or in the, or in the brick direction, but uh, um, I'll hear others and staff as well on that. Um, and I am not opposed to the, to the, to setting back or pulling back the rear facade. Um, both for the kind of the youth, the, the light and air, I, I understand, but also the loss of material there is not, I think, as concerning. Um, and I'm not opposed to the color change there either. Um, given the fact that it's been kind of cut back, so it kind of registers that cutting. So all in all, I think, I mean, maybe with some modifications if others agree to colors, I think I can approve this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, yeah, um, with regard to the front facade, I think that's generally uh very good and I can approve it. I also can uh go along with the removal of the fan lights. Maybe it, it might be a little better with the transom uh there, but uh, that's, I'd see what others might think about that. Uh, but I can approve it with the removal of the fan lights. I think that uh the demo of the br- back uh appears very much to be necessary and I can approve that. I think the design of the rear is appropriate. Uh, my chief concern actually is the, uh, I don't feel comfortable with the size of the addition. I think if you looking at the uh penthouse, the ver- from various aspects, um, in the rooftop pictures, it's pretty obvious how much bigger it is than most of the other things that are going up above. And uh, I think it's highly visible from uh views one and two and four and five. Uh, I don't have any real problem with a visible addition. I think it's, it's fine to have one. Um, but I between the mechanicals and the um elevator override, the addition, it's, the penthouse itself is not the problem. I mean, and I know we've approved and we have to approve uh elevator overrides and so forth just to, you know, because of code. But I think that there's, something should be done to try to reduce this volume up there. reduce this volume up there so that it's not so highly visible from a couple of these views. So everything else I'm I'm very comfortable with and think is quite appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay, I'm I'm with Diana on this one, and I'll start at the top and work my way down uh since. I think that that the visibility issue is a problem for me as well, and and it, I I believe that this area, I don't know this area of the village as well as I should. But I think that the applicant would have to show us or show me that A, there were a a this was not by any means the highest element in 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 the in the in this area and this couple of blocks. B, that there isn't, there isn't, there are examples of uh highly visible rooftop, you know, bulkheads, et cetera, that are on buildings of this scale. The fact that this building seems from views we've seen to be the largest on its block already um makes me feel a little bit more conservative about about the views of the uh bulkhead and and elevator overrun. I and I agree with Adi, I think that the the stair, this, if you look to the views, looking from the other side, the um the stair shaft, um, we, there have been numerous examples of projects uh that have been approved by this commission where we have allowed for that kind of uh addition onto the roof um as an extension of the brick of the sidewall, using the color and material and jointing, et cetera, of the uh of the sidewall brick. I think that would be a more successful rendering of a fairly large visible object than the off-white brick that they're proposing. I agree with Diana also that 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 in concept, the 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 visibility of and the design of the one story rooftop addition is not um in my, in my view, uh inappropriate. It's the uh bulkheads uh and their visibility that is a concern. Uh, in terms of the uh rear facade, I think it's acceptable to cut it back. But I think if there are historic shutters, they should find a way to um retain them and somehow reapply them uh to their their uh facade. I think that the uh upper level windows on the street facade need not retain the fan lights, but should be a multi-pane ti- design similar to what the historic tax photos and other photos show. They shouldn't just be one over one. I think that the storefront uh is fine. Um, I don't have any concerns about the color. Uh, I I don't have any concerns about the wood door. My only thought is that there's something about this, the design of this particular building that seems to emphasize a solid center, and that suggests to me that that center column may have been original. And I th- I'm I I'm I'm given pause by the notion of relocating that central column simply because I think it's it it's something that the architects designed the building around. Uh, so I'd be a little bit shy about removing it, but if others uh have no problem with it, I'll certainly go along.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, thanks. Um, well, unlike some of my colleagues, I don't think I'll be nominating this one for a preservation award. There's not much left once we're done with this one. Um, I agree with Michael about the central column. With regard to the the rooftop accretions, I agree with the the village preservation. It's it's far too visible. And and I'm afraid that once they start putting trees up there, it's going to be even less harmonious and and more attractive to itself. And so uh, I think they need to do something with that. With the rear facade, um, I'm I'm they they did indicate that the condition of the facade was one of the reasons that they were getting rid of it, among others. But I believe that the um the window configuration back there has nothing to do with the original building. It has nothing to do with most of the other buildings in this neighborhood, and there should be punched window openings on the rear facade. Uh, Denny indicated in his uh precedence for uh styles windows that uh most of them did not have fan lights, which to me is all the more reason for retaining fan lights on these windows as something that was one of his ideas, and the fact that he didn't use it everywhere makes this even more unique. I think that's enough for now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, um, much has been said. I think uh I agree with Diana and Michael's uh about the rooftop. I think the whether it's uh the same um may- maybe it's the the same red brick uh so they can blend into the background or somehow something needs to be done for what the uh the the top of the building. Uh, and uh and the fan light, uh if it can be retained, and I like Michael Goldblum's suggestion about the uh the shutters, uh if it can be retained, that is, that would be nice as well. Yeah, you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lefei?
I agree with uh most of the comments of my colleagues. I I'm actually going to start with the fan lights because I really do think they're a very special accent to the building that, you know, helps it, that helps give it character. And I would like to see them keep the fan lights. Um, also on the front, I I I don't know, the the color seems very dark to me. And when I look at the color samples, the color that they're suggesting, actually, it looks dark, it's dark. So I think it should be lighter and that the base should be uniform in color. I I don't have a problem with the back of the building. Um, I think it it's well done and uh not visible. And I I am having a little bit of a, I'm having a problem with the height uh on top of the building. The, you know, on page forty-five is a great view, seems not only does the penthouse seem visible, but then uh, you know, the uh the mechanical floor above it. And when I look at the appendix, it looks like there's a little room there. Uh, in terms of the height, I mean, I know that the applicant said it was nine, you know, there was nine foot high uh floors, but I'm reading twelve. So if they could take another look at that and uh see if they can lower it a little bit, I think that would be very helpful.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Jefferson?
Um, yeah, yeah, um, I must admit, my fellow commissioners have covered all the grounds. Um, Devonshire, Goldblum and Diana, the only issues I have is the height of the penthouse, the height of the overrun in the penthouse. And I I firmly think that the um the fan sh- fan shaped windows should be kept, they're just so odd and and distinctive that you pick up. And with my comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Well, I'm 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 always the one who loves my uh my garages and warehouses and stables. Um, I let's just start by saying that um considering some of the um uh enormous additions that we've seen on these types of buildings um in in other places, actually in the village. Um, you know, this is actually relatively um relatively modest. Um, that said, um, I largely agree with Commissioner Devonshire um about the retaining that central column. Um, the rooftop is a bit too visible. I think it only needs a bit, a little bit of adjustment to get it to where it needs to be. I don't mind some amount of visibility, but um it 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 seems a little bit much. Um, and uh I'm okay with the movement of the rear facade. I think it is very unusual for us to see the in a a actual decrease in the footprint of a structure. Um, and in this case, you know, if it's necessary because of the condition, that's fine. Um, the fan lights, um, I think are a distinctive feature that I would retain as well as um using multi-light windows in that area. I think I've covered everything.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay, so thank you all for your comments. I think um thi- this is um a a good start, this application. And I think that there's um support for each aspect of it with a little bit of further study. And so we won't take an act- action today. We'll ask the applicants to work with the staff to uh respond to the comments that we've made, some of the suggestions we've made about studying the the overall height of visibility and materiality of the penthouse. Um, some of the details at the rear and the front, and I think there's been a lot of support for keeping those fan lights at the top floor windows. So um, why don't we uh we'll take no action and we'll ask the applicants to work with the staff and develop a revision, a set of revisions that respond to our discussion today, and we'll have you back as soon as you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, we'll now move.
Thank you.
We'll now move to public hearing item number five, LPC twenty-two dash zero six six one eight. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block twelve forty-nine, lot twenty-one. Three twenty-three West eighty-seventh Street in the Riverside West End Historic District. This is a Renaissance Revival style row house designed by Francis A Minneth and built in eighteen eighty-nine. And the application is to construct a rooftop addition and replace a transom window.
Okay, commissioners, the applicants um are present and the staff will take you through the presentation. Maggie, you may begin at any time.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Magui, Precipitation Staff. Applicant Kao Pucci is here and is available to answer questions following the presentations. The subject premises is located at the north side of eighty-seventh street between Riverside Drive and Western Avenue. The proposal is for the construction of a rooftop addition and replacement of a transom window. The blue line highlights other existing rooftop addition around the block. Okay. Previous lies. Sorry, having trouble going up, yes. Um, these are photos of the front facade photos and a text photo showing a stained glass windows. Prior to destination, it was replaced with a multi-light window. The proposal is to replace the window in kind, except making it operable instead of fixed. The window would comply with staff level rules, except for the configurations. For a staff level review, the replacement transom is required to be a stained glass transom or a single light transom. This shows the existing condition of the rear facade. The building currently has a rear L and a one-story extension. The construction of the rooftop addition does not meet the staff level rules because of the existence of this one-story extensions. More photos of the rear here. And here are the existing and proposed front and rear elevations. The rooftop addition is not visible from a plastic foral fair and complies with the rules for the staff level additions. Except for the requirement that the building not already have a rear addition. Please note that the rear facade alterations will be rece- revealed on staff level. These next two pages are the existing and proposed sections. The rooftop addition is not visible from the street level. And these are the photos of the existing transom. It is proposed to be replaced in kind, except that it will be operable. Please note that the guard rail will be largely blocked by the view by the existing railings and being revealed at staff level. And these are the photos of the mockup at the roof. Following with the floor plans. And these last two pages showing the plan of the rooftop addition and the roof. The applicant architect Kao Pucci is here. Kao, would you like to add anything now or wait for questions?
Uh, this is Carl Pucci. Uh, no, I think that covers the the bulk of the work and uh I'll be available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, and commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? I don't think we have any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you, and I will turn it over to Sonia Gior to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. So we do have some signups. The first will be um Landmark West. And Sean, and Sean, I'll be promoting you to panelist. And if you could please unmute your mic and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yes, Sonia, good afternoon, Commissioner Sean Porcendi for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee believes that overall this series of interventions is respectful to the landmark. We wish to commend the design team for attending to the owner's needs without losing sight of the underlying landmark. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee recommends approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Helen Freeman. Helen, I'll be promoting you to panelist. And you should be able to unmute your line. If you could please state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Helen Freeman, Historic District Council. HTC would like to commend the applicant on a very modest and sensitively considered proposal. In particular, the proposed restoration work is thoughtful. The decision to keep the building's bulk is more compatible with its neighbors and is a responsible way to work within historic districts. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is it for our signups, and I see there's a hand raised, uh the Reverend K. Carbon. So I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And you should be able to unmute your line. If you could please state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yes, thank you. I won't take three minutes. I'll be brief. Um, Community Board seven considered this post additions and changes that both at our preservation committee uh meeting and then brought to our full board, which voted in a rare thirty-six to zero uh with two abstentions uh vote to approve the uh changes as proposed as being appropriate to the historic district. So again, I'd like to say thank you to the sensitivity with which this proposal's been made. Thank you.
Thank you. And those are all the speakers. I don't see any other hands raised, so I'll turn it back to you, Jerk Girl.
Okay, thank you very much. So I think the um testimony was largely supportive. But if there's anything that the applicant would like to say before we move to our discussion, please feel free to add any comments at this point.
No, uh, I'd like to thank the Community Board and everyone else for their support. I don't have anything further.
And commissioners, are there any final questions? Okay, so I'm just sending you all requests to unmute so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Lefei, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, and Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. So there are two components to this application, the rooftop addition, which is not visible from a public way and would otherwise meet the rules, except for that the staff is not authorized to issue a uh an approval for a rooftop addition if there's an existing rear yard addition. Um, and so the commission can evaluate the cumulative effect. And um and on the front facade, we have the replacement of the transom window with, that's an existing multi-light window with a new operable multi-light window. And um this doesn't meet the staff level rules because it originally was a stained glass window. And so staff can only approve replacing um the window with one that will match the historic condition. So they're asking to replace it with the a fan uh a multi-light window, which has been at the site for a long time, and in this arched opening is different from the other windows on the facades. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you start this one?
You know, you know how much I absolutely hate to uh follow the crowd. Um, however, um, I would like to join the thirty-six to nothing in the community board and the uh um and all of the advocates. Um, I have no problem with this whatsoever. It is indeed modest and sensitive. And I'm and I'm fine with it on both aspects that have come to us.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I'm in agreement. I think this is appropriate as presented.
Commissioner Chapin?
I also agree with what's been stated.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Devonshire?
At the risk of giving this applicant a big head, I think it's quite appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Same here.
Commissioner Luffey?
It's appropriate.
And Commissioner Jefferson?
Appropriate.
Okay, I think we have a consensus to approve. Commissioner Gustafson, would you make the motion?
Oh, I'm so glad I got the easy one. In the matter of LPC 22-06618, 323 West 87th Street in the Riverside West End Historic District, the application is to construct a rooftop addition and replace a transom window. I note that the building's scale, style, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Riverside West End Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the construction of the proposed rooftop addition will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the rooftop addition will be setback from the manseled roof and rear parapet, helping to maintain a sense of the building's original massing and will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, that the cumulative massing of the proposed rooftop addition and existing rear extensions will not overwhelm the building, that the rooftop addition will feature a simple massing and typical materials and finishes, that the historic stained glass window transom at the primary facade was removed prior to the designation, and the proposed transom window will match the existing window will be in keeping with the operation configuration materials and details of windows sometimes found at row houses of this age and style, and that the window replacement work will not disrupt any unifying characteristics of the row or preclude the possible installation of a stained glass window in the future.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
I'm sorry, second.
Okay, thanks. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luffey?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Well, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
The next item is public hearing item number six. This is an application, sorry, LPC 22-07982, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1392, lot 57, 1002 Madison Avenue in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a neo-federal style bank building built in 1930, and the application is to replace entrance infill and screen the windows.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Thomas, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen and you need to unmute yourself and state your name for the record. You can advance the slides using your, yep, great. Please do unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you may begin. Thomas, we can't hear you. Please unmute yourself.
There we go. There we go. All good?
Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Thomas Hutt. I'm one of the founding partners of HST Architecture. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. We are here today for our client, the White Cube Gallery. White Cube was established in 1993 and is one of the leading contemporary art galleries in the world. White Cube Exhibition Program features some of the most significant artists working today, including George Vasylus, Damien Hirst, Theaster Gates, Julie Merritt, Doris Selfchanda, to name a few. White Cube currently has two galleries in London, a gallery in Hong Kong, and a viewing room in Paris and New York. This new gallery will continue their world-class exhibition program where artists can present a coherent body of work within a beautiful, focused environment. White Cube will join other world-class galleries in the Upper East Side, including Lee Corvey at 909 Madison, Hauser &amp; Wirth at 32 East 69th Street, Mnuchin at 45 East 78th Street, and Venus Over Manhattan at 120 East 65th Street, to name a few. The original drawing on the right and the early photo of the 1931 Cross and Cross Bank Building, one of several two and three-story bank buildings designed by the firm in the early 1930s and 40s. Take note here, please, of the original ground floor elevation. The building entry is at the north and the center bay has a window with a fan light. This side-by-side street elevation of the original building on the left and the current building on the right illustrates some of the changes that have taken place sometime prior to the current designation. The central window and fan light have been removed and replaced with a small door, side lights, columns, wood transom, and new fan light. The original entry door to the north has been converted into a window similar to the original window to the south. This drawing is intended to illustrate that the current fan light is not the original fan light from the central window assembly. The differences highlighted for you include changes in alignment and proportions. You can see here that the original transom bar between the fan light and the top of window is aligned with the two impulse stones at either side of the opening and how this creates a horizontal datum within the brick headers of the flanking window and door openings. Note too, in the current building, how the altered entry changed the alignment, the proportions, and the muntin pattern from the original design. The bottom of the fan light is now lower than the original. We have a fairly involved proposed restoration program for the front. As you can tell from these current photos and a few more that I'll show you, the building has suffered from serious water intrusion for many years. We intend to address and resolve this problem at the south party wall and roof that has caused this decades-long efflorescence, discoloration, and damage to the brick along the south edge of the facade. We've planned several other measures to restore and improve upon the current condition of the street facade. We will gently clean the entire facade, including stain removal. We will work and staff on the best method for doing this. We intend to replace all the missing or damaged brick with brick to match the original. We will re-point areas of the facade, providing new mortar and tooling to match the original in areas with missing or failing mortar. We will remove the non-historical mail drop box to the window, to the window on the right below it, and replace with brick to match and repair the granite base that was altered for its installation. We will scrape and repaint all exterior woodwork, including the windows and frames. Our primary proposed work is to remove the non-original fan light columns and side light and door. In its place, we are proposing a stainless steel and glass door and glass transom held in stainless steel frame, all within a white metal surround in the existing masonry opening. This white surround, we hope, will recall the current wood jam, as well as to serve to fill the brick recess up to the existing granite base that returns into the current masonry opening. These street doors are the only entry point into the building. And as such, the width and height of these new doors are critical to the art program and functioning of the gallery, to enable large-scale art to be brought in and out of the building. Their transparency, too, will provide a much-desired view into the art spaces beyond. In the design, we have taken care to align the transom bar and the top door rail with the height of the adjacent marble impulse blocks. In this way, we hope to recall the original alignment of the transom bar, the fan light, with the impulse blocks, and recreate the original horizontal data with the brick headers on the flanking windows. And all in all, our approach to this design is to provide a new, minimal, elegant, and neutral solution within the existing non-altered masonry opening. We have chosen a few precedent images and previous C of As to point to similar approaches in designated properties with predominantly masonry facades. In this C of A 6802 from 822 Madison Avenue for Marty, and in another, we're quoting now from the C of A, Madison Avenue has long been a premier shopping street whose retail activity is reflected in the contemporary design of the storefronts of Madison Avenue. One is characterized by the transparency of storefronts, which is derived from last, the contrast with the rich, stylistically detailed masonry of the facades of the upper stories. We believe that our proposal will contribute to the vibrant commercial streets of Madison Avenue, reinforcing the historic district's character of contemporary design, carefully integrated with historic fabric. A few more other examples of all Madison Avenue. Few more down the street. And just to conclude with one other thing, we're in front of you before. The plans before you show on the ground, the second floor, large galleries, and in the front towards Madison Avenue, a code-required exit stair, the single exit stair, which is up at the east facade. To allow for this and to enable art programming in the upper floors, we are requesting to install at the windows removable white fabric scrims that can be backlit with recessed LED strips. For the two south windows at each floor, this will help to mute the presence of the stair landing behind these windows. The scrims at the other second floor, these guys, these scrims at the other second floor, will allow for flexible art program and the installation of exhibition walls as needed. I thank you for taking your time, and I have no other.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And as always, we'll start with anyone who signed up in advance, and I will turn it over to Sonya to take us through the testimony.
Great, thank you. So the first signup we have is Friends of the Upper East Side, and I'll be promoting you to panelist. And you should be able to unmute your line. If you can please state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, this is Laura Varelli, representing Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. Chair Carol and Honorable Commissioners, very few Upper East Side Historic District structures were built specifically for commercial uses, and the majority of those were bank buildings. The designation report calls out their architectural significance, noting that they were designing styles that reflect those of contemporary residential architecture, and that their scale is consciously related to that of residential architecture in the area. The colonial-inspired style was carefully chosen for several bank buildings on and adjacent to Madison Avenue. The pre-designation alterations of 1002 Madison Avenue was done in a highly sensitive manner, and it is clear that the intent was to move the entrance while maintaining the integrity of cross-and-cross design. The newly proposed design shows absolutely no respect for this neo-federal bank. The removal of the fan light and the excessive transparency of the new door will significantly detract from the character of the building. Friends is sympathetic to the new tenants' need for a larger entryway and more visibility. However, we believe there are ways to achieve that without installing stainless steel glass doors. The applicant's attempt to justify their proposal by citing the contemporary design of Madison Avenue storefront is irrelevant. The examples shown are former residential buildings that were later converted for commercial use or new buildings. This neo-federal bank building is not a storefront, and it should not be regulated as such. Additionally, the need for increased visibility is contradicted by the proposal to screen the existing wood windows. We ask the commission to deny this proposal and the applicant to come back with a design that maintains the integrity of this neo-federal building with a detailed fan light and multi-light wooden doors. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Helen Freeman. And Helen, I'll be promoting you to panelist shortly. And if you could unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Helen Freeman, Historic Districts Council. HTC appreciates the goal of this proposed facade work, but finds the solution to be inappropriate. We believe the wood elements, including the columns, pilasters, and entablature, as well as the fan light, should be maintained. Perhaps then the minimalist games can be played with the door and side lights. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Christina Conroy. Christina, I'll be promoting you to panelist. And if you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, in the realm of inappropriate alterations to a federal or neo-federal style building, removing a character-defining fan light from the doorway seems to us to rank high on this list. Now, coming in as a close second is the removal of the paneled woodwork below with its columns and side lights. The fact that this entrance is not original is a little consequence, as it is an historic alteration and perfectly suited architecturally to the building. The proposed infill is completely inappropriate and a perfect example of failure to heed the advice, "To thine own style be true." The interior window screening isn't ideal, but is less of a concern. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any other signups, and I don't see any hands raised, so I will note that Manhattan Community Board Eight recommends approval. I'll turn it back to you, Chair Carol.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to ask the applicant if he'd like to respond to any of the comments that we've heard.
I know. Well, only by that, that I think that there are very many examples up and down Madison Avenue of just the kind of updating that we are proposing. We were very specific to stay within the existing masonry opening, to do something extremely refined. And I think that we are intentionally working within the expressed intent of the Madison Avenue guidelines that are being set out, which is to increase, to make things more current, to increase transparency into the buildings at the ground floor, and to allow that to work in conjunction with the defined masonry buildings and upper floors.
Okay, and I know, you know, you may not have thought of this, because I know the height of the doors is important to you, but there was testimony about keeping the enframent and the fan light, although not original, but sort of keeping those and doing something more transparent for your operable leaves of your door. I don't know if you explored some hybrid.
The door scale is very, very critical to the art program.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioners, any final questions? All right, I'm sending in request to unmute. Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll begin our discussion. So as has been presented and as we've heard, this is a bank building along Madison Avenue. Madison Avenue is a commercial thoroughfare, and we do have a set of guidelines or rules for the storefronts in buildings that have commercial storefronts. This building would have been built around the time that those storefronts would have been added to the former row houses, and it was built in a neoclassical style, but the door enframent and assembly is not, what's there today is not original, although similar to the historic drawings. And the application is to remove those and to do a taller set of doors with more transparency in a more modern language. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you? So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you start this one?
Sure. This is an interesting little building because it's it's one of those bank buildings. I do think that I agree with the Upper East Side Friends of in saying that. I don't, I don't really see this as being similar to a lot of the other retail buildings in this district because of that distinction. This was really never designed as a storefront, which those were. And it was very much more designed as a whole building that was really seen as. An entire discrete design as opposed to the repetitive retail bays. That were not generally the entrance to the building proper that we typically see. Nor is it like the modifications to brownstones which clearly read of a different period. And have a different scale and plane than the brownstones. So I think this is a little bit, you know, of its own type or of that relatively restricted type. And therefore. I feel like it doesn't necessarily merit the flexibility in design that we normally. Allow for typical storefronts. So with that in mind, I think I agree with the, I think it was HTC that suggested to leave the transom. Alone or restore the transom to the historic transom and stick with the modern doors. But I don't think I could accept it as as shown. Also, I'm not sure that the stainless steel. It kind of looks out of place here to me. I'm not sure what the right finish would be and I don't presume to tell them, but the stainless steel looks. Out of place.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
I couldn't agree with my colleague more.
Okay, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I concur with the other Commissioners.
Commissioner Luttrell?
I agree as well.
And Commissioner Jefferson?
Yeah, this is one of those projects where in terms of degree of abstraction, how far do you go to minimalism? And in this case, they went a little bit too far.
Okay, and Commissioner Gustafson?
I agree with my fellow Commissioners.
Commissioner Shamir Baron? Commissioner Shamir Baron? I, okay. I think she's not available at the moment, so we'll skip to Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow Commissioners. While understanding the need for the visibility into the gallery space, I think that can be achieved with. Certainly it needs some modification, at least the fan light and. If you look at. The slide five, you see that there's the appearance of the solid devoid in this neo-federal looks just really odd. And it really needs to be, you know, broken up in a way that's that's more appropriate. So, won't say anymore. Everybody said the same thing.
Okay, all right, great. And then we also have just on the. Issue of transparency, there is a. Modification to the windows to create these translucent window shades at certain windows. So I neglected to mention that at the beginning of our discussion, but if anyone wants to add something about that. I guess just raise your hand and I'll call it. Okay, so let me go. I think Commissioner Shamir Baron is back with us, so I'll have Commissioner Shamir Baron. If you want to comment on both the door and the translucent shades and then we'll go back to Commissioner Luttrell.
Yes, I'm so sorry I had this other thing. Yeah, I, I actually think I might agree with some of the testimony that. That despite the fact that this is not an original door assembly. I don't think it's appropriate to lose the fan. Lights or frankly, much, much of the peers, the plasters. And so I'm just wondering if it's possible at all for the applicant to go back and to think about. A glazing system that's behind all of that, you know, some, I mean, I'm not opposed to taking this to the next. To the, to what it needs to be next programmatically, a gallery space obviously is, I think, interesting here. But to have all of that happen behind the, the, the kind of the typical. Language of this entry door, I think would be more appropriate. And I also do not think that there should be the name of the gallery on the front. On the, on the brickwork on top. I don't think it should happen there. I think maybe on a canopy or somewhere else.
Did you have any thoughts on the. Translucent shades in the windows?
I think that those are acceptable.
All right, and Commissioner Luttrell, did you want to add something either on the shades or anything else?
Yeah, I had forgotten to mention the signage. I also don't think it's appropriate where it is and, you know, there was originally. Lettering in the boxes and those horizontal boxes over the side windows. And maybe that's a place to put the signage if, if, you know, it's on a facade or a banner.
Okay. Okay, so I think where we are today is that I think while people are open to and will celebrate this new use in this building. And open to some modifications to allow and facilitate that use. And allow the artwork to come in and out and some transparency. That the style of the door is, I think, for most, just a little too minimalist for the style of this particular building. And, and we're not thinking about this building as a building with a storefront so much as a door to an entirely designed building. So we'll ask the applicants to work with the staff to think about ways to retain some of the fabric. And incorporate some transparency. And obviously I know that the height is an issue as well. So we'll ask you to re-study it and we'll come back to you when you, come back to us when you have a revised proposal. And I think also just if you can also re-study the size and location of the signage as well. All right, so we'll take no action and we'll move to the next item. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is public hearing item number seven, LPC twenty-two dash eleven zero one two. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan Block thirteen ninety-nine Lot one oh one. One oh five E sixty-fourth Street in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a row house designed by WP and AM Parsons built in eighteen eighty-one eighty-two, later altered circa nineteen forty-one. And the application is to construct a new building.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Cass, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen. And then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Good afternoon Commissioners Cass Snackelberg, Higgins, Quaysbarth and Partners. I'm joined by Lindsay Peterson, my colleague Lindsay. And the architects on the project, Jason Allen and Lisa Chow from Workshop Designer Architecture are available. Excuse me, are available for any questions Jason was intending on presenting, but unfortunately has come down with COVID and is having a tough time. Verbalizing, so I'll take you through the presentation and then Lisa and Jason can participate in discussion. As Corey mentioned, the project address is one oh five E sixty-fourth Street. And the scope of work is to construct a new building. This is one oh five E sixty-fourth. It was built as one of a row of six row houses constructed in eighteen eighty-two. And in the nineteen forties, its stoop was removed, all the facade detailing was stripped off and the building was. Coated in stucco, a brown tinted stucco. The building is listed in the designation report as having no style. I know we've been here recently before. This building has a similar designation, no style, as do four of the other six remaining houses on the road. And we'll talk a bit more about that. One of those houses at one thirteen E sixty-fourth Street. Also had a no style designation and ten years ago, its facade was replaced under commission approval with a limestone facade. So we'll talk a bit more about that. You can see a site plan here, the Sanborn map. The building at one oh five is highlighted in yellow. Park Avenue here, E sixty-fourth Street here, so we're bound between the blocks between Park Avenue and Lexington in the Upper East Side Historic District. An aerial view, just to give you a sense of the block context. One oh five E sixty-fourth Street is located here, directly adjacent to the building of one oh three E sixty-fourth Street, also known as six oh one Park Avenue. Which was part of the original row of six and was reconstructed in nineteen twenty. The nineteen fifty-four twenty-one story six oh five Park Avenue is here up on the northwest corner of the block. And then another large scale apartment building from the nineteen twenties, nineteen twenty-seven apartment building here. So a fairly typical block for, for the district, although it does have a small scale building on its west end. A mixture, a variety of styles and articulations for the row houses in the middle of the block. As is seen throughout, throughout the historic district. A view of the, of the row itself. This is one thirteen E sixty-fourth Street. This was reconstructed in twenty eleven in limestone. One oh, one oh five is down here and then one oh three E sixty-fourth Street, which was reconstructed in nineteen twenty. Down a sort of bookend. So the two ends of the original row of six have already been reconstructed, one historically and one under commission approval. The proposal is to construct a new building on the site. The articulation of the building is a five-story limestone fronted building with a six-floor mansard. Facade would be in limestone casement windows in steel with wrought iron railings and infill at the openings on the ground floor. Gained windows on the second floor and then a sort of graduated series of openings. Three, four and five with the fifth floor slightly smaller in height, window opening slightly smaller in height than the floors directly below. In terms of appropriateness, we see the property, the project is appropriate sort of on two levels. One sort of on a district scale. This reconstruction of the site is very much in keeping with the historical pattern of redevelopment seen throughout the historic district in all blocks. From the southern end of the district all the way up to the northern end of the district. And that results in a sort of stylistic eclecticism that really makes these side streets so interesting to walk and see as one. Travels through the district. And then the building itself in terms of its style, its massing materiality. We think it is an appropriate addition to this group of buildings and obviously to the, to the block itself. It has an articulated base with rusticated stone, classical detailing. An articulation of a sort of shaft at the center and then a cap here with a sort of attic story. The massing is similar to what is seen throughout the district with five-story street frontage and a one-story mansard. And then a materiality of course certainly typical granite water table limestone facade. And a standing seam metal roof, this in zinc with steel and wrought iron across the facade for a particular. Highlighted elements. I'm stepping back a bit and looking at the existing conditions. This is a photo on the left of the, of the base of the building and the area way, fairly nondescript ironwork and stucco. Similarly across the top, brownstone stucco, not in particularly good condition. And windows that have been replaced and then just a simple masonry parapet. The roof as well as a few skylights, a hatch for access to the roof. I'll point out this very tall iron fence that one sees from the street and I'll point that out in some of the street views toward the end of the presentation. It is on the west parapet separating one oh five from the corner building at, at one oh three E sixty-fourth Street. And then the rear elevation of the building, two, two maps just to illustrate the changes that have occurred. This map from nineteen oh seven shows the six buildings across the original row. One oh five is highlighted in red. You can see historically it had a three-story extension as did one oh three. And the buildings directly to the east. By the nineteen fifty-five Bromley map, one oh three had been reconstructed to occupy its full lot. And the rear extension at one oh five had been, had been removed. So that is more or less the condition that one sees here. So there was an extension that covered this entire side. So the rear of the building. Has been altered. It no longer matches the building directly to, to its east in terms of the extension. And then you can see this sort of sheer wall, this just unarticulated brick wall. That makes up the side elevation of one oh three E sixty-fourth Street. So it's, it's basically sort of crammed into the lower southwest corner of the block. Really sort of outside of the context of its, of its immediate row. Looking at the, some historical views of the building and thinking about how this block in particular and the district is in general. Evolved from really about nineteen hundred through the late nineteen twenties. This is a photo from nineteen twenty-seven looking east across E sixty-fourth Street. One oh three E sixty-fourth Street, the westernmost building in the original row of six had already been reconstructed in nineteen twenty. A sort of a change that one sees throughout the district. And I'll just point out it's a little blurry in the background, but, but the eastern half of the block, you can see the nineteen twenties apartment building. Over on Lexington under construction, but, but this eastern half of the block, you can see here the sort of variety of roof lines and articulations. This, this, this end of the block was built with ten speculative row houses that were all identical. And by nineteen twenty-seven, most of those had actually been reconstructed already. And so this evolution, as I said, really began in the first decade of the nineteen aughts and then continued through the thirties. But this block, the, the western half where the original row of six remained in nineteen twenty-seven. That had then also begun to change. And so this photo I think sort of shows how this evolution. Began early in the century and really up through the first quarter. Also just note that one of these houses down here. Which was a no style, given a no style designation in nineteen eighty-one when the district was designated. That was also reconstructed under commission approval in the nineteen ninety. So that this, this pattern is existing on this block as well as throughout, throughout the district. A few details, historic details of, of the building itself. So one oh five seen here in the nineteen forties tax photo, more or less intact in nineteen forty. But a filing in nineteen forty-one found in the building department illustrates the stripping of the facade, the removal of that extension in the rear. And basically getting to what you can see through the tree here in the nineteen sixties photograph. Also just point out that the building directly to the east, so one oh seven E sixty-fourth Street, that had been stripped previously. To, to one oh five. So there is this sort of random series of changes that occurred to, to these buildings. Stripping off the detailing, re-cladding and brick and stucco. As seen in the adjacent, the adjacent property. This change in. In the block fronts throughout the district. Is something that one sees as you walk the, the streets today. And so I think what's fascinating about these photographs, and these are just a series of different block fronts in the east seventies. But I think illustrates the, the degree of change that has occurred throughout the district. And I think it is this tapestry, this sort of rich mix of styles that makes the Upper East Side Historic District so special. And I think I would make the case too that the Upper East Side Historic District compared to other residential districts, particularly in Manhattan. With a lot of mid-block row houses is actually unique in this regard. If you think about Greenwich Village or the Upper West Side, Greenwich Village is much more consistent in terms of its. Its brick-fronted row houses. Many, many fewer have been, been altered. The Upper West Side too, many of these sort of first generation speculative row houses are intact. And so there's a much greater consistency. Lot by lot on some of these other districts, whereas in the Upper East Side, you see this tremendous variety. And it started, as I said, soon after the turn of the century. And is what I think makes, makes the side streets of the district so, so interesting. It's this sort of lack of cohesiveness, this stylistic range with all sort of revival styles that, that, that makes the district so special. And this, sorry, I'll just. Sorry. As I noted, the, the group of six that make up the original row sort of illustrate this, this series of change. The, the early change in nineteen twenty to one oh three E sixty-fourth Street. And then the reconstruction in limestone on the east end of the row of one thirteen. Of course, there are numerous examples, there's a handful of examples here of other buildings throughout the Upper East Side Historic District that were stripped. Brownstone buildings, they were given no style designations in the, in the district designation report. And the commission has approved new limestone fronted buildings and a sort of a range of articulation. Ones that align with their neighbors, those that don't, some that have sort of more restrained, almost more contemporary expressions like this one at the center. And then ones like this on the left here at twelve E seventy-sixth Street that perhaps. And then ones like this on the left here at twelve E seventy sixth street that perhaps are a little bit more traditional in their in their articulation. In terms of street, sorry, in terms of floor levels. There are examples where the floor levels are raised up and the entry is slightly raised above the sidewalk. There are of course examples where one goes in at a lower level as well. So there's a wide range of new buildings that the commissioners approved, those with limestone fronts in sort of a Bozart or classical idiom. In a range of articulations and expressions. And then, of course, historically, the district is filled with five story limestone fronted houses, row houses with with mansards. This one at the center, a very tall mansard with an exposed brick side elevation. Varying degrees of of height relative to buildings directly adjacent. And also, of course, as I mentioned, sort of different articulations, materiality that one sees from from lot to lot to lot. So there's this 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 range of materiality and stylistic expressions that one sees in the district. Sorry. There, of course, are also thinking about sort of some of the references that. That Jason and Lisa have made for. For for their design, these gained windows, it's a treatment that one sees frequently in the district. This parlor level with either a double height expression like this or a single height expression with heavy mullions dividing. Dividing windows, casement windows, et cetera. There are masonry frames typically that surround those openings, some narrower, some wider. Sometimes divided by columns, sometimes just by mullions and then, of course, mansards and dormer windows above. Turning to the the proposed, the proposal. What we what we are proposing, as I said, is a reconstruction of the front of the building. Raising the building more or less up to grade for an at-grade entry and reconstructing the front facade in a buff limestone. With granite, a granite water table and steps at the front. Ironwork, wrought iron work at the at the parlor level and at the individual masonry openings and at this low fence here at the areaway. A metal cornice with brackets and dentals and a standing seam zinc. Mansard with circular arched, arched dormers. The windows would will be in steel casement, casement operation. And then just in terms of the composition, there's a heavy rusticated base. And then the second floors are integrated into that base expression and then the central portion of the building. The floors, floors three and four have windows of the same height and then. The fifth floor has almost more like an attic story, windows of a slightly shorter dimension, which is typical for this classical. Expression for for the row house. Again, looking at the the rendering that you've seen before. The building in the foreground, you can see one oh three sort of at the left is actually built proud of the front facade of one oh three. We're proposing to maintain the plane of one oh three consist, sorry, maintain the plane of one oh five consistent with one oh seven. Directly directly to to the east and the other buildings in the row. And as I said, bring the the ground plane up to up to grade with a slight, a small four inch step. Just to separate the sidewalk from from the entry areaway. Looking at the section, this is an existing section. Currently, one comes in down a few steps, about two feet down to the lower, to the first floor, the parlor level and then the floors above. As is typical with these eighteen eighties houses, there there's a tall parlor level and a tall top floor. The proposed section, as I said, brings the building up more or less to grade. There's a modest amount of excavation to get about a ten foot clear height at the basement level. About one, one and a half feet of of excavation and then taller, lower floors. And then in section, a consistent height on the third, fourth and fifth floors of ten foot four. Although on the facade, as I noted, the the top floor is actually expressed with smaller window openings. Nearly two feet shorter than than the window openings on floors three and four. And then the top floor that's articulated with a mansard, that's lower still at about ten feet. So the interior floor to floor ceiling heights are about nine, one and just under nine feet on the top floor. Also just point out up at the very top at the the roof level. The mansard is articulated with a continuous parapet, so there is no railing above the roof level. And the roof is accessed by by a hatch. There's no stair bulkhead that extends up through the roof. At the rear, mechanicals are housed behind a screen on the on the the main roof. And ductwork and chimney flues off the back extended to to the south, sorry, to the northeast. At the rear, we're maintaining the plane of the top floor consistent with the the building directly adjacent. And pushing out the lower floors by about three feet to gain a little bit more depth on these on these lower floors. Just turning to the areaway and the work at the base of the building, as I mentioned in the central photograph, where you can see. The building at the corner of Park Avenue is proud of about two feet. And so we are maintaining the facade plane of the existing. And also maintaining basically the footprint of the areaway. So there is no extension into into the sidewalk plane. No need for revocable consent, just a reconfiguration of the railings and the entry. So the existing plan and elevation on the left and the proposed here. There's a bracketed tablature with rusticated base. Service doors flanking a centered paired door and ironwork inset into the metal frames. It's consistent with a lot of the homes throughout the district. Then you can see there's a granite plinth about four inches up from the sidewalk level and then small steps. Up into the main, the main entry and and the service entries. As I mentioned, a buff limestone across the facade and a gray granite, similar to a deer aisle, a gray granite water table at the base of the elevation. The rear elevation, you can see an elevation, it's articulated both with three and two bay punched openings. The rear would be reconstructed, as I mentioned, the top floor maintains the plane of the of the adjacent building. And then the lower floors is extended by about three feet. The facade is going to be reconstructed in brick, a Norman handmade brick. Here you can see it's a gray tone and then the openings would be framed with a limestone band and a substantial limestone spandrel separating. The the lower level and the and the parlor floor. Up at the upper left, upper, upper register of the elevation. Standing seam zinc cladding would wrap the back of the of the top floor. Wood mechanical screen around the the equipment. And then metal and glass window, glass railings at each of the floors. So this reads as much as punched opening similar to what is there today. But understanding that the back of this building has lost its its three story extension, it's up against a a brick wall. And the the property to the west and so its placement in the in the context of the row is sort of been altered already. But we think in this sort of tonality of this, it will fit as well with the articulation of the two bay, two bay openings. A rendering again of the rear, this is a vantage point not seen from the back of the lot, but actually a little bit further away. But just to give you a sense of the articulation, so larger openings at the base, punched openings on floors three, four and five. And then some details where you can see the long Norman brick and then a detail of that brick. And then detail here showing the limestone spandrel and limestone frame and the metal wing glass infill for for the openings. Photographs of a mockup constructed on the roof of the existing building on the left and then sort of a rendered view that considers the the mansard. As well as the reconstructed front facade. So this is a photograph here of the existing condition. You can see the roof line of one oh three sixty fourth street is filled with chimneys and vents and some low bulkheads. You can also see in the foreground in front of the 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 mockup is this tall fence that I mentioned that is visible up on the roof. And then here, this is this view, of course, is from the southwest corner of sixty fourth and Park, looking east across Park Avenue. The reconstructed front facade in plane with its neighbors, set back from from the plane of the gabled end of. One oh three and then the side elevation just articulated in in common brick is this typical. Four side elevations of mansards, the front of the mansard is finished with limestone coping. And you can see the scale of it relative to 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 its neighbors. Looking from the northwest corner of Park and sixty fourth street, so sort of looking due due east. Again, you can see that fence perhaps below the mockup and then the vents and things like that that extend up above the roof. Roof line of one oh three in the foreground. And then the simple side elevation of the mansard and extended chimney flues of the adjacent property. Some other photographs of the mockups. So this is the same view that you saw, the rendered view. And then, of course, long views where you really just are seeing the the roof line, but not so much of the the context. Similarly, this view from sixty fifth street, again, this is the roof line. Of one oh three and one oh five E sixty fourth street with vents and flues and the like. And similarly, a little bit further west of Park Avenue on sixty fifth street. And then a few other views, a long view from Park Avenue at about sixty third street. And then the views, we included these photographs on sixty fourth street, the street trees on the block are actually quite healthy and mature. And it really blocks any views of the top of the building at this at this time of the year, but we included these photographs. Anyway, just to illustrate the point and just just to circle back and to reiterate the the appropriateness. I think there are really sort of two key things to remember in the context of the overall historic district. I think first and foremost, the building and its design needs to sort of be derived from from the district itself. And I think hopefully what we've established is that the trajectory of buildings in this historic district from. The turn of the the nineteen twentieth century into the late nineteen twenties. There is a rich history of reconstructions in the district. That really make the 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 side streets of this of this district special and unique. It is this sort of varied stylistic expression of materiality. The the articulation of the the registers from building to building that vary, that make the side streets of the district so special. So I think in this way. This this proposal really does fit in with that that continuum. I think also, obviously, it fits in with the changes that have been approved by the commission since nineteen eighty one. Where no style buildings have been replaced, often with limestone fronted buildings, but not exclusively. And that's a history that has carried through, you know, up up until quite recently. And I think this change that's being proposed is consistent with with both the historic change that that happened throughout the district, but also under commissioner view. And then finally, I would just say in terms of the design itself of the building, in terms of its scale, its style, its composition, the materiality. It is very much appropriate for the district. It's a five story fronted limestone fronted building with a six floor integral mansard. It's a scale that one sees throughout the district. The classical expression that's integrated into this, perhaps with a slightly contemporary bent as well is is fits. It's very comfortably in the district and then the composition in terms of the organization of the base and the rusticated base. The sort of ganged windows at the parlor level and then the graduated sort of larger than smaller windows. Is is consistent with with the classical treatments for for buildings of this of this style. And then, of course, in terms of materiality, the integration of the buff limestone, gray granite, standing seam metal. And ironwork is consistent as as one sees again throughout the side streets of the historic district. We think that the building fits well both within its block context and within the overall context of the Upper East Side Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do have at least one question, Commissioner Goldblow.
Thank you. Cass, you had mentioned that the. Building in question is one of a row of originally six townhouses. Of which one is the one we're looking at on the corner. And then there's five more of which one was renovated further down the block. Am I got that right?
Correct, yep.
So that leaves. Three, four, including this one, are all four of those designated no style?
Correct, yes. So so of the six in the row, obviously, the building here, the neo-federal building at one oh three was given a style designation. The other five were given no style designations. And in twenty eleven, the commission approved the reconstruction of one thirteen E sixty fourth street to be clad in limestone.
Good. And and the one, the one at one fourteen, did it also modify the floor to floor heights, do you know?
No, so they maintain the below grade entry and they just re-clad the front facade. So that's a different approach than what we're proposing here. You know, as I mentioned. Applicants have proposed and the commission has approved different treatments where there are at-grade entries and realignments of the floors. And then, you know, similar to similar to one oh three. Or applicants have come in with basically just a simple re-cladding and maintaining the below grade, below below grade entry.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I don't see any other questions at this time. So we'll move to public testimony during the meeting. And wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And as always, we start with anyone who signed up in advance and then get everyone else. I will turn it over to Sonia Giorgi to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. Our first scientist, Laura Varelli. So Laura, I'll be promoting you to panelist. And if you could please unmute your mic and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
This is Laura Varelli, representing Friends of the Upper East Side Historic District. Chair Carol and Honorable Commissioners. Friends notes that this agenda item covers only the design of the new building. Our preservation committee does not agree that the demolition of one oh five E sixty fourth street should now be considered by the commissioners. Recent discussions regarding demolition of no style buildings and the Board of Estimate deal treating such buildings. As if they were vacant lots have prompted Friends to undertake a review of official Board of Estimate records. And the forty plus years of regulatory history of no style buildings. This research project is still in progress, but so far we have been unable to locate language in the official records of the. Board of Estimates subcentuating the position that demolition of no style buildings can be permitted at staff level. Regulatory history study thus far also indicates a wide variety of permits types for demolition of no style buildings. With the most recent staff level demolition permitted in nineteen ninety nine, over twenty years ago. More detailed preliminary findings are summarized in the letter sent to the LPC on June twenty fourth. Going to the proposal itself, Friends Preservation Committee opposes the demolition of this nineteenth century townhouse. Originally a row of six, all but one, the nineteen twenties neo-federal building at the corner of Park Avenue are considered to have no style. Admittedly, each individual facade of this row may lack remontation. However, the designation report states that they retain original height and iska- scale of openings. The existing rhythm and cohesiveness of this no, this row, despite the differences in materials and window treatment. Are an essential part of the historic district. The neighborhood's history of alteration of the early twentieth century is not an excuse to remove historical material. And introduce faux styles. In addition, the rear facade of one oh five E sixty fourth street and its neighbors is still mostly intact. So sporting a uniform corbelled cornice and brick details. Not long ago, in two thousand nineteen, the commission saw a different proposal for this building. At the time, the applicant was proposing to reintroduce some of their original Italiania details, including windows and framements and the cornice. And add a rooftop addition. Notwithstanding the excessively tall rooftop addition, the proposed alterations designed by the same architect were sensitive to the building. And maintained the harmony within the row. Unfortunately, the design in front of you today does not. The thirteen feet increase of the building's height and substantial visibility of the mansard roof. Completely overwhelms the nineteen twenties neo-federal individual landmark quality building at the corner of Park Avenue. By rearranging the floor heights and opening sizes, the applicant breaks that almost perfect rhythm of this row. As it stands, the windows and their interstitial spaces are congruent and harmonious. The proposed openings, however, appear to be too close to the lot lines, creating odd proportions and heightening the contrast to the neighboring buildings. creating odd proportions and heightening the contrast to the neighboring buildings. The demolition of 105 E 64th Street, if approved, will represent a real loss to the Upper East Side, a neighborhood with a distinctive and cohesive architectural character. We kindly ask the commissioners to recognize that the harmony and cohesiveness that are essential to the sense of place of the district doesn't only derive from intricate infirmaments and band courses, torn balustrades, detailed finials, wire and balconies, or decorative friezes. The cohesiveness also comes from uniform roof lines, rhythmic openings, and harmonious street walls. We urge the commission to deny this application and the applicant to come back with a proposal that maintains this building, respects the district, and is mindful of this row's harmony and significance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Helen Freeman. And Helen, I'll be promoting you to panelist now. If you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Helen Freeman, Historic District Council. HTC finds the proposed change to the building's floor to floor height and aspects of its new bulk to be inappropriate. And as such, the proposal should be rejected in full. 105 E 64th Street is one of one of a row of five row houses originally built in 1882. Those five houses have been substantially altered over the years. But throughout their existence, they've always shared unbroken alignment of their floor to floor heights, window sill and head heights and cornice lines. Any alterations to this building at the present time should respect the basic, original, underlying grid of this row of houses. HTC can imagine a facade design that uses the classical language proposed in this application, but one that is developed and applied using the basic geometry of the row. This proposal contains a number of precedent images for buildings that have had their facades replaced with early 20th century and more recent neoclassical facades. We appreciate this effort, but we want to observe that in the majority of these precedent images, the floor to floor heights have been maintained and the basic pattern of fenestration remains aligned with neighboring structures. There is no compelling architectural or programmatic reason for altering the floor to floor heights of this building and for expanding its bulk on the third and fourth floors. In fact, the introduction of basically uniform floor to floor heights eliminates a pleasing hierarchy from this facade. It is perhaps this game that is resulting in a series of awkward facade issues. The change in floor to floor heights also increases the visibility of the added mansard roof more than necessary, thereby interrupting the handsome roof profile of the Howell House at the corner of Park and 64th. The extension of the third and fourth floor plates beyond their original line, the loss of the rear yard cornice line, and the elimination of the three punched window openings on these two floors are also unacceptable, violations of the generally accepted rules for altering and expanding row houses. It is for these reasons that we believe that LPC should reject this proposal and ask the applicant to develop a design that adheres to the rules laid out in the LPC guidelines for extensions and additions. We believe that incorporating these rules into this proposal will, in the end, result in the creation of a well proportioned, handsome, and urbanistically more elegant solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Christina Conroy. And Christina, I will be promoting you to panelist. And if you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, unlike a recent Upper East Side proposal that included demolishing a stripped brownstone house, we find that the existing building at 105 E 64 retains sufficient historic references, such that approval of its demolition should certainly not be done by a certificate of no effect. The building retains a defined basement level and parlor floor, historic window openings, balcony railings at the parlor level, and a simplified projecting cornice. Most important, it is one of a clearly evident row of four circa 1881 buildings. These facts make it a poor candidate for any kind of demolition and replacement that has been found appropriate elsewhere in this district. Designation report categorizes this building as having no style. There appears to be nothing in the report that refers to any special regulatory status for no style buildings. In fact, the architectural description of the district notes that these simplified brownstones were a part of the historical continuum of the district's development. There is no implication that these buildings have no architectural value despite them having not having a defined style. We believe that if the designation report doesn't specifically state that no style buildings can be demolished by CNE, and if there is no other LPC zoning or land use codifying this, there is no legal basis for it. A well-known real estate lawyer who regularly appears before this commission once told us that an agreement between two agencies, even a written one, on LPC processes and requirements has no legal standing and can be changed at will. Regarding the proposed design itself, we find it to be a promising first attempt, but a couple of problems. One is the large single opening at the second floor. While larger openings are not atypical at this level, the facade is more often divided into two or three openings. If a single opening, it is not often this wide and has more masonry framing at the sides, the proposed window approaches the proportions of a storefront window. Also, we find the presence of the mansard roof to be awkward and inharmonious with its relationship with the side gable of the adjoining corner building. Thank you.
Thank you. So we do not have any other signups and I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So I will note that Manhattan Community Board 8 recommends denial, finding the mansard to be very visible from the public way and too tall, and noting that the mansard and dormer windows into the roof scape detract from the restrained elegance of the south facing elevation of 603 Park Ave. I'll turn it back to you, Chair Carol.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So before I turn it back to the applicant to respond, I did want to ask our general counsel, Mark Sliverman, to again, address the issue of the Board of Standards, Board of Estimates confirmation of this particular historic district and the designation of no style buildings.
Thank you, Sarah. So there's there's no dispute. I think Friends recognizes it. Nobody really denies it that there was, this was a big issue at the time of the designation, when the Board of Estimate was considering whether to approve or modify or rescind the designation of the district. There is a memo from the LPC executive staff to the Board of Estimate laying out the process that we have articulated here before. That's been shared with the Friends of the Upper East Side, as well as the applicant, actually. You know, that lays it out that it's contemporaneous and explains what the commission is proposing to do. That is referenced in the Department of City Planning Commission's CPC's report on this district. They talk about the, you know, streamlining of review. So this is a practice that was adopted from day one in this district and has been applied since day one in this district. The only, the only variance that has happened over this extended period of time is that the commission at some point decided that the the initial memo which stated that a staff could issue a canee to demolish the building while a CVA application for the new building was pending, it was decided that that didn't adequately protect the district in the sense that we didn't want to have a building demolished and then no building approved. And so notwithstanding this is a no style building, we wanted, as we always have said, we want a building there as opposed to no building. So the commission has, certainly since I have been at the commission since 1995, adjusted that, the practice to say that the staff cannot issue that canee until the commission has first approved the new building. And on occasion, that finding is just folded into the CVA. So there is in fact, no staff level approval for the demolition. So I think it's just fair to say this is something that was part of the designation. And it is a practice, as I've said, that has been followed since day one and has applied to many buildings that are redeemed no style in that designation. You're on mute, Sarah.
Right. And I wanted to point out that because we didn't want any canee to be issued before there was a CVA for a new building, often for just sort of efficiency of paperwork, we've just folded that approval into the CVA. So there won't always be a canee for every single one of these. And just like we fold other additional staff level work into a final certificate of appropriateness and streamline the number of permits being issued. And finally, I'd want to say that this, of course, is different than how we have treated no style buildings in every other historic district where the commission has, even though it's no style and indicated from the time of designation that it is not contributing, the commission has, the commission as a body of commissioners makes the determination on whether demolition is appropriate. Unlike, and so the Upper East Side has always been treated differently. Commissioner Goldblum?
Just a follow up question to that for Mark. So let's say that the, and it sounds like this was the kind of clause that was inserted at the request of the residents of the neighborhood at the time of designation, that, you know, they were concerned about it. And this was like a compromise or some kind of agreement, right? Is that correct?
I can't say, you know, it may well have been. I'm not 100% sure. I just knew this was an issue from property owners that was the Board of Estimate articulated at some point and was a serious enough issue that the commission felt the need at the time to come forward with a solution.
And if if some entity amongst either the city, the neighborhood, its representatives, the mayor's office, this commission wanted to propose to change that, what would the procedure be for doing so?
Well, I think we would have to, well, most likely, we'd have to sort of adopt, we have to have a hearing and we would have to sort of notify, you know, the property owners who have, you know, been relying on this. So the no style property owners in particular, you know, they've been relying on this since, you know, for quite some time. And we have to make sure they had notice and then we likely have to have a hearing and decide how to move forward. But I do think there are, there are some issues because, you know, many people will have, have, you know, potentially bought these buildings with the, and paid for the notion that they could be demolished. And, you know, and again, I think this is, you know, one of the things that that we have to remember is all of these buildings, if they, if they choose to be, you know, if an owner chooses to demolish and replace them, they're all subject to the LPC's full, you know, review about what is an appropriate new building in its place.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Although this is not the time or the place to resolve that issue because the rule is the rule right now. You know, there is, there is also the possibility of revisiting that rule on a non retroactive basis. But I'm just to keep that in mind for whether we want to actually take action on this.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying. You're saying you mean as a, as a not take action on this application or not?
No, no, not to, this application is what it is. But if we're going to consider the issue that Commissioner Goldblum raised, there are ways to do that without offending the world.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes. How do you make a judgment on this particular building? Say the mansard roof. I mean, typically, they're putting a roof addition and you push it back. But because this is almost a new construction, how do you decide? Is this okay just because of the height?
Well, I, yeah, I would think of it as a new building. And it's a new building that is modeling itself on some of the other sort of Bozarts, neoclassical facades that historically had mansard roofs and had some variety in the overall height. So I wouldn't think of it as a rooftop addition. It's sort of a piece, a whole piece.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So now I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to comments we've heard about the design proportions, floor levels, and details.
Perfect. Great. Thank you very much. And I appreciate all the conversation that that has preceded this. I think in terms of process, I think there is a, there's a conversation to be had. But I think that's not really part of this discussion under this application. If, you know, if the commission wants to reevaluate how no style buildings are considered in the district after 40 years of fairly consistent treatment, I think that, you know, that obviously needs to happen after these applications of this application that's come before you. So I think turning to the commentary about the design, I think, I think it's sort of an interesting series and mix of comments. The community board, this was not part of the resolution that was read today. But the, the community board actually commended the designers on the, on the quote unquote, beauty of the front elevation up to the cornice. And their concern was, was about sort of how they deem the sort of visibility of the addition. They considered, and I think this goes to Commissioner Jefferson's question, they considered the mansard as like a rooftop addition. And I think really, one needs to think about this as a whole composition. One needs to think of this as a sort of a studied composition of a five story limestone facade that is consistent with, you know, many buildings in the district, some of which I've shared with you today, a limestone fronted facade with an integral mansard sixth floor. I think in terms of the organization of the facade, I would sort of counter some of the testimony in terms of the awkwardness of the articulation and the composition. I think it's actually, Abby, if you're controlling the slides, could I ask that you actually go to the elevations? I think it's a little easier to read.
If you click on your screen, you'll have, there you go.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Just run up to the, to the elevation. I think one can see there's a, there's a real order. You know, purposely mentioning that word, but there's a real order to, to the, to the facade. There's a rusticated base. The second floor is integrated into that base with the cornice line here. There are heavy divisions of these openings on either side to create this sort of ganged window. One sees that in examples that I shared with you today. The masonry frame is nearly three feet on, on either side. It's actually steps in from the edge of the, of the upper portion of the facade. But this facade has a real sense of sort of punched openings in a limestone field. And that's obviously been the intention of Jason as he's, as he's developed this design. And then just in terms of the sort of hierarchy of the facade, obviously, the base feels a little bit heavier as it should. The integration of the ironwork on the doors and at the fence, the areaway fence, and then the lighter touch at the base of the openings. And then the way the building sort of graduates up to this attic story. I think this comment about the, the articulation of the, of the existing facade being significant and expressing a hierarchy, it's very plain. It's without articulation. And I think the expressiveness of this new facade really enhances this portion of the row. I think it's also relevant that this building, you know, is at the, sort of at the end of the row, more or less. It's up against 103. These two buildings have changed. There are three buildings that are still no style. And then the easternmost building, 113, that has been changed under commission review. And, you know, even in that CVA, I think it's significant to note that in the findings that the commissioners found that, quote, the facade has been highly altered and that the house is not one for which the Upper East Side Historic District was designated. And there, and goes on for there. But I think that's consistent with sort of the way we're looking at, at 105. So I think in terms of the articulation, it is different in terms of the floor heights than what are there today. But I think it's actually consistent with the Bozarts or neoclassical expression, with the sort of graduated floor levels, different levels of articulation at the base from the top. And the mansard, which has this sort of integrated parapet incorporated into it to avoid railings and other elements above it, I think is a very clean feature. It's one that you see throughout the district as integral to the, the five story design. Sometimes it's an addition on Italian aid row houses that are brownstone fronted. But you also see it integrated as part of a comprehensive composition. And I think that's obviously the model that we're pursuing here. And then just finally, in the comments about the impact to the roof line of 103 E 64th Street, I find that sort of odd. I mean, you see this straight ridge across the, across the Park Avenue elevation. But because it's a gable ended building, the mansard adjacent to the gable really doesn't impact the reading of the gable. So, you know, you see the side elevation of the mansard, but you're just seeing this sort of but you're just seeing this sort of clean ridge of that roof, and it really is the gable end. I'll get to the rendering in just a second. Sorry, this is taking a little while. But it is the gable end here that is, I think, perhaps the most interesting part. And having the mansard directly adjacent, I think, is very much in keeping with these revival styles that one sees throughout the district, whether they are neo-colonial, neo-federal, you know, Tudor, or Bozard or neoclassical. These are, this, these juxtapositions are what makes side streets of the district so interesting. And I will leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Right, Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, I'm starting to send you all request unmute so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. Right, and Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
That can.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed, and we've had a lot of discussion again about the no-style designation. But what is clear is that this commission has, in the case of buildings, many buildings of the no-style in this historic district, has approved a variety of limestone-fronted facades and buildings in the sort of evoking the Bozards or neoclassical styles in its, their proportions and details, and in some cases have changed floor levels and other cases have worked with existing floor levels, and the commission has approved both approaches. And so with that, we'll begin our discussion and, and, and see where we end up today. So Commissioner Luttrell, would you start this one?
Yeah, I mean, I actually think you sort of said it all. This is, these buildings, what we approve these buildings somewhat regularly. Limestone buildings that are more ornate, as you said, Bozard or neoclassical are, you know, not uncommon. It's funny, in the village, you know, where the townhouses are smaller, people buy to and combine them. And here, people, you know, turn brownstones that are normal for like a park slope, they, they turn them into these limestone buildings, and we approve them. So I don't really see anything about this project that, that is, that needs to be revised. I mean, it's very tasteful, the back is very understated, I don't have a problem with the roof. And, you know, I think, based on precedent and all that I've said, I can approve this.
Okay, thanks. And just to further that thought, the reason the commission has done it in this particular historic district is because there's the historic layer. It's a significant historic layer in this historic district when, in the early 20th century, in the teens and twenties and the thirties, the 19th century brownstone facades were altered by the, sort of the new wave population as this neighborhood became the Gold Coast. And so this sort of updating buildings to have a classical limestone front was a historic layer of this district, and our commission approvals have been based on that. Okay, great. Commissioner Jefferson?
Um, this is a new building, and it's very well done, and I can approve it. The back and front does not have to have any, it's just a new building, and I can approve it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, while I will, I don't think I will ever feel comfortable with the, with the interpretation of that rule. We are where we are, as Kaz said, and as a new building, as Commissioner Jefferson refers to it, there is no, there's nothing about it that is particularly inappropriate. I would, you know, as a matter of personal preference, I'd rather not see it peeking so much over the top of the roof of the building next to it, but I don't think that's a reason for finding it inappropriate, so I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Thanks. I, I also am not entirely comfortable with our interpretation or the longstanding practice around these no-style buildings. And I think that ultimately, there may be a realization that the no-style buildings, by virtue of their, like, periodic presence as, like, those denuded facades, will ultimately have been a, a characteristic of the feel of the, of the district to have, to have that syncopation of very ornate and fancy facades and then not. And the loss of all of those, I think, is a loss. But I accept that it's a practice longstanding, and so I can find this new building appropriate in all ways except for the tall mansard because of the kind of, its, its relationship to the context of the 103 building, which I think is very important and different and special condition. And I think that this kind of extra height next to its gable is not appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I thank the applicant for an extremely detailed and very good, as usual, proposal, you know, proposal and explanation. For me, the, this proposal is quite similar to the R. Stern building we saw just recently. And I think that is very characteristic of the district as presented. Initially, I had the same feeling about the second floor that was expressed by some of the testimony and considered whether the divider should be lighter colored or something. But I looked at the examples and the presentation closely before the hearing and also during, and I, I feel that they've convinced me that this really is an appropriate approach and that is used many times throughout the district, as is the mansard. And I, I think the whole thing is just, you know, really quite typical and appropriate.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thank you. I agree with Diana that this reminds me very much of a stern application, and I have the same feeling about that, that, about this that I did about that. Could you turn to page 004, please? There we go. Nice flute. So what I think about, when I think about this project is this. And what this shows me is that despite the variation in these six, five formerly matching buildings, what remains is a streetscape that feels very harmonious, to use today's word, in, in large measure, I think, because of the alignment of the window sills and the rhythm of the windows one to the next. And it allows for the kind of variation in color, texture, and material that we see here, even including the heavily modified building on the right. So while I take it as a given that the rules we abide by totally permit the demolition of this building and totally permit the creation of a new building, I think that the new building, at least in its upper two floors, if not three, should have its window sills and heads align and the rhythm of the windows align with the other windows. I think that that is a contextual, contextually appropriate response to this particular block, which has this extant and probably not going to vanish rhythm that I think is quite distinctive and quite pleasing. So that's point one, and that, that would have the effect of most likely requiring a redesign of the building because it would push the building down back to a dropped basement, but not necessarily, but most likely. I don't think that there's anything keeping them from modifying the floor heights, but I think that the windows should align and should, should maintain the rhythm space in terms of their spacing left to right. In terms of the mansard, I think that the, the problem is, as, as Adi put it, the imposition of the brick party wall or sidewall on the sky space or sky, you know, the profile, the, the skyline of the, of the, the brick townhouse on the corner as seen from Park Avenue. I think that that profile, because it's a low building in a sea of high buildings, and because of its proximity actually to the church across the street, which I think is also a fascinating kind of break in that very strong street wall, I think that seeing the sky over that building is important. And I think therefore that the, though I have no problem with the mansard per se, I think that the, the extent of that and height of that brick wall really does harm the reading of the building on the corner. Therefore, I think that's also inappropriate.
Okay, and I think, you know, there are many buildings one in from the corner that are taller than the corner buildings in this historic district. So is it the, because the gate, it's a gate side, well, gable-fronted on 64th Street, and you're seeing the side of a sloped end of a gable, that seeing the wall behind you?
It's, it's the, it's the profile at the sky. There was a shot from across Park Avenue or from the median that I thought was, that I thought was the one that struck me. There was like a before and after with the mockup. It's in the views.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that also reminded me. Right there, bingo. So, you know, you see that, that sky above the, you know, above the green copper ridge cap. I think that's a distinctive aspect of the streetscape in this little area. And I think that the, the height and regularity and mass of that brick blank wall behind it is, it's a change that I don't think is an improvement, and it's a, it's a impingement on a building that I think is a significant building in the district. Also, I did want to mention, I think the rear facade modification, or the rear facade, new building, is fine except for the top floor of what would be the straight vertical wall that would, is in line with the others, which should have three windows plus.
Okay. Thanks. Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, this is kind of a distressing one. I, I have the same feelings about the interpretation of the, of the rules. I am, I would otherwise be in abject opposition to the demolition of this building. And I, I bristle at the, at the term "no-style" or "non-contributing." I know there have been several buildings in the Village, in the West Village, that were industrial buildings that were considered to be, by the writer of the designation report, no-style or not contributing, and, and I find that to be completely inappropriate. Nevertheless, we are left with the design. I looked at the, at the rendering and said, "What on earth is going on with that mansard roof? It's, it's a monster on top of a building. There's something totally wrong with it." And then when we saw that it was a section through the mansard roof and it includes a three or three-and-a-half-foot parapet, it explained it all to me. So what we're left with is the design as presented. I agree completely with Michael about the rhythm of the windows and the window levels. They, they need to be consistent on the line. I think the, the second-story enlargement of that window is redolent of windows along the elevated streetcar lines that were modified to look like that so that they could have merchants on the second-story windows that were viewable from the streetcars. I think that's completely inappropriate, and I think the mansard roof is, is almost ridiculously out of scale, and it needs to be cut back, and that's a deal breaker for me.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Diana. I think this is very similar to what we have historically approved and, and, you know, similar to that recent case that, that the board just reviewed with the mansard roof as well. But the two Michaels do raise a good point, and I leave it to the majority to decide in terms of the contextual alignment in the front, as well as whether you want to do anything with the, the rooftop.
Okay, so I think there are five of us that, including you, Wellington, that have said that we are comfortable with this particular design, but you have just sort of expressed at the end of your comments a question about what the majority is on the roof and the alignment of the windows. So I think we are five of us who were comfortable with it as is. Wellington, you would be the sixth, or, and we have a few of us who, well, one who was comfortable with it with the mansard height and design were issue, addressed, and then two others that feel strongly about the window alignment. So I guess I want to just turn back to you, Commissioner Chen, and see how strongly, or if you, how you feel about the mansard and the window alignment.
Well, I mean, I, I think in terms of the, in terms of what we normally judge, I mean, I think it depends on whether the commission want to hold a higher standard. I think that we do not typically ask all applicants that their windows must be in alignment with the, with the rest of the street. So that I would defer to the legal counsel to see if there's anything that, whether we need to cross that threshold. And, and I think that's question number one. And number two, the, in terms of the top of rooftop, what Commissioner Goldblum mentioned about the view from the side looking across the street, I think that there's one or two ways to look at it. One is obviously whether that's a backdrop to help delineate the line, because I keep on thinking that apartment to the left, and whether we really need to suppress it so that if we...
Whoops.
I, I think, Commissioner Chen, I think you froze. So, all right, so here, you know, for me, this view, I think, is not that inconsistent with other views in the historic district where you have taller buildings one in from, one on the corner. But I think, Commissioner Chen, you are not prepared to support it as is today. It sounds like you still have questions about the top and, and the window alignment as well.
Well, I, I think that in terms of, you know, that, that is more of a, to me, is as a, as a general policy issue of whether the is, does the commission typically hold that a, a building needs to be aligned in terms of facade alignment? Or is that, I do see occasionally, we do allow, I mean, the, the building to be, you know, sort of stand on his own rather than it has to be in alignment. And so that is, that's why I said the question for the legal counsel. And then on the other side, there are two ways to interpret this mansard roof from this angle, whether that is something that is, is a must-do, for example.
Well, if I can just address quickly the legal issue, I mean, the commission, for a new building, which is what this is being considered, the commission is not unusual for it to allow, you know, windows not to align. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, but it's not an issue that the commission has ever had a hard and fast rule on. So it's very much in a case-by-case situation, depending on the specific context.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Mark. That's what I thought. That's what I, that's why I said with this, that's a higher threshold that, that we, we need to, to review at. And, and, you know, in terms of this backdrop here, I, I, I can go with the majority in terms of the, the skyline here. I, I do not find that to be inappropriate.
Okay. So just to be clear, Wellington, there are five of us who would approve it as is. So are you willing to, are you comfortable going with that majority on all components?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, so I think if my count is right, we do have enough, but I do want to recognize all of the com- Um, but I do want to recognize all of the comments have been incredibly valuable and things that we will carry forward as we continue to evaluate other applications. But let me go ahead and make a motion and we'll see where we are on this. We'll do the, we'll call the vote. Okay, so in the matter of a docket number twenty-two dash eleven zero one two one oh five east sixty-fourth street in the Upper East Side Historic District of Row House, designed by WPNAM Parsons, built in eighteen eighty-one to eighty-two, eighty-two, and later altered circa nineteen forty-one. This is an application to construct a new building. And I note that a certificate of appropriateness nineteen dash three nine six two one was issued on July eighteenth, twenty nineteen, approving the construction of a rooftop addition and alterations to the facade. And I note that this is not one of the buildings for which the Upper East Side Historic District was designated and that it is identified as having no style in the Upper East Side Historic District Designation Report. We recommend approval, finding that the existing building is not one for which the historic district was designated, and therefore the work will not eliminate a significant feature of streetscape or historic district. But the proposed design is in keeping with the long historic tradition within the Upper East Side Historic District of altering or replacing earlier facades or buildings with new classically inspired facades or buildings. That the introduction of a new building that does not take its cues from the building it replaces in terms of wall plane, floor heights and and or other features irrespective of belonging to a row was typical of early twentieth century alterations in this historic district. That the height of the building and number of floors will maintain typical proportions for townhouses within this historic district and will be in keeping with the range of building heights within this streetscape. That the overall composition of the facade in terms of its finishes, symmetry, materials, fenestration, level of articulation, and use of classical elements will evoke historic style row houses in this historic district. That the hierarchical organization and proportional relationship of facade elements will be consistent with historic, classically inspired buildings and supportive of a cohesive design. That the design of the front facade is a unified compass composition with proportions and profiles that relate well to neighboring properties. That the granite paving at the area way will be in keeping with the materials found at other areaways within the historic district. That the rear facade will not project into the rear yard beyond the existing rear yard extensions within this block and therefore will not diminish, further diminish the central grand space. That the design and materiality of the rear facade featuring punch windows and brick cladding will be in keeping with the character of other rear facades within the block. That the rear flue extensions, mechanical units, and access ladder will not be visible from any public thoroughfares and will be setback from the rear facades. The brick that the brick party wall at the side at the west side of the top floor Mansard, which will be visible over the adjacent shorter building to the west, will be consistent with other visible party walls in the district. And that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Upper East Side Historic District. Right. And Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
No.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
No.
Commissioner Goldblum?
No.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeff, Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
With six in favor and three opposed, the motion passed.
Right, that's approved. Um, but I will, thank you. I would also ask, though, to the extent that there is a parapet on that side facade that could be lowered or replaced with a fence without calling more attention to the wall, that's something I'd ask you to voluntarily study with the staff in response to some of the discussion we've had today.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Certainly. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to public hearing item number eight, LPC twenty-two dash ten five eighty. An application for a certificate of appropriateness, number of Manhattan Block seventeen fifty-four, lot twenty. Twenty forty-one to twenty fifty-one Madison Avenue, AKA fifty to fifty-two, east one hundred and thirtieth Street. Church of All Saints Roman Catholic Parish House and School Individual Landmark. This is a Gothic Revival style parochial school building designed by William W. Renwick nineteen oh two to four and enlarged by Neville and Bag in nineteen oh seven. And the application is to replace entrance infill.
Okay, commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Edwin, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, good afternoon. I'm going to make this. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Edwin Tang. I am the architect of record for the All All Saints School and Church project. May I begin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Please go ahead.
So um this is the school building of the complex. It is a corner building located on the intersection of Madison Avenue and east one hundred and thirtieth Street. I'm going to skip ahead to the slide. This is a shot of the corner building uh looking from Madison Street, Madison Avenue, I'm sorry. And I'm going to skip to the shot looking from east one hundred and thirtieth Street. And here's a series of historic photos. There are no clear photos of the historic entrance doors of this school building, which you can see in the middle of the facade. And I'm going to show you the existing condition. The transom and transom bar are original, which we are maintaining. The double doors uh were replaced by the Archdiocese of New York during their ownership. Uh, they are currently metal doors with each leaf thirty inches wide and with a center style that is concealed when the door, when the doors are closed. Uh, the thirty inches prevents the passage of a user of a wheelchair uh, which is not ADA compliant. What we are proposing is to reconfigure the doors into a single leaf with pull side and push side clearance to allow users with wheelchairs to be able to pass through. Uh, the door is going to be uh clad in wood uh border, board and batten and vertical boarding with a view panel in the middle. Uh, as well as the uh wheelchair ramp and planters, which are before the Design Commission and Department of Transportation at the moment. Uh, but this focuses on the door reconfiguration. Here it is. I would like to skip to the rendering so you can see. So here are the shop drawings showing the door. The view panel was a request from the school because in anticipation of the amount of traffic through this main entrance and also for security reasons. Uh, and also to prevent people from slamming the door on each other when they don't know that someone else is on the other side. Uh, this view panel is proposed to address all those concerns. Uh, the 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 planters are removable. They're not proposed to be affixed and they are selected in a means uh to match the black ironwork on the front of the school. And the door is proposed to be painted the school color, which is burgundy. Uh, this is, this is for the uh Capital Preparatory Harlem Charter School. And this is a closer shot. And the diamond view panel was uh trying to reference uh the rectory entrance stores on the other side of the complex on east one hundred and thirtieth Street. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't see any questions at this time, so we will move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Sonya to take us through the testimony.
Great. So our first sign up is Helen Freeman. And Helen, I'll be promoting you to panelist. And if you can please unmute your mic, mic and state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, Helen Freeman, Historic District Council. HTC prefers option one of this proposal as it visually minimizes the introduction of an asymmetrical door to an otherwise symmetrical opening. Perhaps a single centered door with two equal solid sides would be better still. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Christina Conroy. And Christina, I'll be promoting you to panelist shortly. And if you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. We find the simple proposed ramp and flanking planters an unobtrusive and appropriate design for making this entrance to a wonderful Gothic Revival complex accessible. The proposed doorway infill, however, that includes both options is unfortunate. This type of rustic design does not suit high style Gothic Revival architecture. We aren't so concerned about the material, wood, fiberglass, or metal with a painted finish properly detailed would be fine. The design should look toward the historic doors on the building for guidance, not the later inappropriate replacements. As we always do, we point out that an automatic door opener would eliminate the need for the awkward single side light and off-centered door. A larger single door or pair of doors would meet access requirements if electrically operated. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do not have any other speakers signed up, and I'm not seeing any hands raised. So I will note that Manhattan Community Board eleven recommends approval, supporting the proposed entrance door upgrade with new ramp for the barrier free access. And noting that the property is to be renovated for the Capital Preparatory Harlem Charter School, scheduled to open later this summer. I'll turn it back to Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'd like to turn back to the applicant and see if you'd like to respond to the comments that we've heard.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I would like to address the comment about the uh, the the centering of the door. We have actually tried that. And ADA standards dictate pull side clearances to be a minimum of eighteen inches. And working with the opening that's existing, we're constrained to that. We also pro- proposed to the Department of Transportation and Design Commission a electrically operated assistive device for double doors. But the DOT pushed back to say uh their understanding of the ADA code is that if the power is offline, that the user in a wheelchair still needs to be able to maneuver the doors without power and have them requisite clearances. And they rejected our proposal with keeping the double doors with the uh assisted device. So hence, we had no choice but to fall back to a manually operated door. So we did try that very hard. They just did not accept it.
Okay, thank you. And uh, thank you for explaining the alternatives that you explored. Um, and we have sometimes been able to center a door if there's enough room on either side for the side lights. But here, the opening sounds like is just not wide enough to give you the required side panels. Okay, any other questions, commissioners? Okay, I'm gonna start to ask you all to unmute so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing? And Commissioner Shamir Baron, Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing is closed and we will now begin our discussion. And um, I wanna thank the applicant again for explaining the alternatives that they studied here. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you start this one?
Uh, yeah, sure. Um, I I I'm fine with the new door. I I would uh I would suggest that the the diamond shaped window, I mean, I understand they need it. Uh, but but there's probably a lot of forms on this building they could use for reference to perhaps create something that actually refers to something else on the building. Uh, I'm looking at the way the, you know, even the wrought iron fence has that uh, the plus sign, right? Anything that just sort of refers to one of the shapes that's already on the building, the diamond just seems so odd. Um, but in any event, otherwise, fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Um, I appreciate the applicant's explanation and effort, and I um can approve it as presented.
Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, yeah, I uh, I think I agree with Commissioner Gustafson that um and I I also, you know, I I wish it could be a single door, but it can't. So that's not there, there, that's not something we're considering. But I think that maybe the shape could be something a little more appropriate um on the building. Obviously, there's a cross which is circular. That's, I mean, that is rounded, that's a possibility or something. Just the the, I think the diamond shape does look of a lot of character. So uh, perhaps there's something else, even a simple, just a simple rectangle or square. But anyway, that, working with the staff on that, and that's it. And we should, I can approve it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I can approve it as is. Uh, I do think that, I think they call that a quatrefoil shape. So I think that uh, I think that that would be perfectly lovely and they could do that with staff if if they so chose, but I think it's approvable of it as is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with uh the commissioner's suggestions. Yeah, and I had to commend the applicant for trying to make it accessible uh the ADA and uh but the shape, yeah, uh, they should work with the staff.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah, I agree with the commissioners uh Gustafson and Chapin.
Okay, and Commissioner Jefferson? I think we don't have Commissioner Jefferson. Okay. So, um, all right, so where we are is I think we have support for this application, but we'll ask the applicant to continue to work with the staff to um to design a shape for the window that references or relates to some feature on the building. Commissioner Gustafson, would you make that motion?
In the matter of LPC twenty-two one zero five eight zero, twenty forty-one to twenty fifty-one Madison Avenue, also known as fifty to fifty-two, east one hundred and thirtieth Street. The Church of All Saints Roman Catholic Parish House and School, an individual landmark. The application is to replace entrance infill. Um, I recommend approval, uh, finding that the existing doors are not original and their removal will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features. That the configuration and operation of the proposed new door will provide for barrier free access to the school building in the least intrusive manner possible while retaining the historic transom bar and transom window. That the proposed metal door clad with painted wood vertical board cladding will match the materials and finishes of doors often found in buildings of this age and style. And the configuration of a single door with a side panel will meet code requirements that will harmonize with the details of the facade. The proposed galvanized steel planters at the bridge will not corrode or stain the adjacent stone will will block a trip hazard at the edge of the ramp and channel students away from the edge of the bridge. And that the proposed work will not detract from the historic and architectural character of the building or the individual landmark site. Um, and I request that the, I recommend that the applicant work with staff on the uh, on the uh configuration of of the window, perhaps consider a quatrefoil shape or another shape that's um already appears in the style of the building.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner uh Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
He's gone.
Gone. Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson, I think, is also gone.
Gone.
Uh, and Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passed.
Okay, thank you. That's approved. And please continue to work with the staff on the window.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Um, so we'll, we're gonna do commissioners, one more item. We are very behind schedule. And so we are going to read some of the other items into the record, but you can bear with us. We'll try to get through this last item. And Cory?
Yes, and I'll I'll start by uh reading those few items into the record. That's gonna be items ten through thirteen. Number ten is LPC twenty-two dash zero nine seven three three one Water Street, uh, Marine Boat Fire Station in the Fulton Ferry Historic Districts, Historic District number eleven, LPC twenty-one dash zero six two six five, eleven fourteen dash fourteen one seventy-ninth Street, Addison Park Historic District. Item twelve, LPC twenty-two dash zero four three twenty, that's thirty-four dash forty-one eighty-third Street in the Jackson Heights Historic District. And item thirteen, LPC twenty-two dash zero eight one three four, Fort Totten Campus in the Fort Totten Historic District. Will all be read into the record and presented at a future date uh where testimony will be taken at that time, as it will be the first time that they'll be presented. Uh, with that, we'll go back to the last item of the day, public hearing item number nine, LPC twenty-two dash ten six zero three, application for a binding report in the Borough of Manhattan. Block eleven eleven, lot one, Central Park, North Meadow Center Scenic Landmark. Uh, this is a building constructed circa nineteen ten within an English Romantic style public park designed in eighteen fifty-seven by Frederick.
This is a building constructed circa 1910 within an English Romantic style public park designed in 1857 by Frederick Law Olmsted and Calvert Vox. The application is to modify masonry openings, replace infill, and install retaining walls, storage enclosures, paving, and fencing.
Good Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Christopher, you now have control of the presentation. You can advance the slides using your arrow keys of your mouse. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Christopher Nolan at the Central Park Conservancy. I'm here with my colleagues, Harriet Prove and Bob Rumsey. Present work at the North Meadow Center in Central Park. The site is just north of the 97th Street Transfers Roads, right in the middle of the park. It houses park operations in the facility itself, public recreation courts on the north side, and half of the south side courtyard, half of the house side courtyard is a support space for parking and operations and as a permanent, some recreational space. And on the east and west edges of the building, there's operational space. Our project addresses both the facade of the building, the building itself, and all of the site development around it to support improved recreational amenities in the area and improve operational support of the entire north end of the park. We presented our project to and got unanimous support from Boards 5, 7, 8, and 10. Some history of the site, the building was actually added to the park and its compound was added to the park in 1910. It was built as a storage facility, stable and operation support. There were storage yard in the front and courtyard. On the backside, there were two large concrete manure pits on the east and west and a garbage incinerator on the backside. The earliest known photograph we have been able to find actually dates from 1919 when there was a firewood distribution within the park from trees cut down. You'll notice that the facade through time has evolved and changed to respond to the different uses of the building over time. As I had mentioned, the south courtyard of the building was an operation space and courtyard. This is a photograph in the 1930s, right before a significant redevelopment of the facility itself and the entire North Meadow area to expand recreational amenity within the park. You'll notice both through the breezeway to the backside courtyard, the backyard backyard space on the north side of the building was an operations compound as well. And just some photographs of the compound itself. Pre reconstruction and the Moses era. In that courtyard itself, there was actually also an additional outbuilding, we believe, to be some kind of garage. Then you can see there's kind of an early 20th century mechanics lift. In 1934, there was a significant redevelopment proposed and built out in the north end of the park. The North Meadow was converted, regraded and converted to North Meadow Ballfields. There were significant outdoor active recreational amenities layered into the park, and there was a redevelopment in the building itself. The exterior penetrations and openings and windows were actually significantly altered at the time. There were additional doors opened into operational space. The building was unheated when it was originally built. As the storage said, they were below grade exterior boiler rooms put in to heat each wing of the building itself. The courtyard on the front side has always up until at that period remained operational space. You could see the facade of the building at that point was brick. And then along the very south facade, there was a change in the winters. This is a view from the 1960s. In the 1934 renovation, there was significant redevelopment of the back storage area into active recreation. Handball courts were built at that time, 16 foot chain link fence that essentially is the configuration as today. You get a sense of the ball fields as they were redeveloped, rebuilt the ball fields, much greener than they were. This is at a moment in time where the park pre conservancy, where the park was in a period of deterioration. We've actually renovated the ball fields. You'll notice that the courtyard on the front side at this point is still a parking lot. We've done significant work in and around the area to create better public access and more public recreation in the area and support operations. This is one of two facilities in the park that support our park operations. Our main primary facility is the 79th Street Yard, and then we have the North Meadow Center. Our project actually really focuses on improving the operational function of that to improve operations in the north end of the park and better navigate the space for public recreation, public access, and our operations space. Three primary goals and purpose of the project is to renovate the public facilities, the recreation courts, the public restrooms, create better access, renovate and optimize the vitally needed park operation space. The park as a landmark needs maintenance. It needs proper operation space for our staff to function and properly maintain the landmark. And there's site work to support that and screen the park operations. And we'll get into this in detail. So really, we've been able to move parking to the exterior edges of the building itself to create more public amenity and courtyard. So public recreation on the north side of the building, 1934 Recreation Handball Courts in a 16 foot fenced in area, there's an open asphalt space here, some chest and check, chest and checkers tables. On the far east side, there's a central corridor for the building through the breezeway that allows circulation from inside the backside. In the 19, early 1990s, we repaved or seal coated actually on the west side of the central front courtyard to create three half court basketball courts. We striped the parking area on the west side and added basketball courts, but that's still up until very recently, until our project actually was used for active park operations, parking to support park operations. And we would clear out those parkings for program use on a special events basis. You'll notice it in the corners of the building are the public restrooms, women's on the west side, men's on the east side, and part of our project consolidates the public recreation to a central core and pedestrian circulation through the center of the building itself. Some views, the basketball courts that were renovated in 1990s, we seal coat those on a very fairly regular basis because they reflect the cracking that comes through the asphalt. You get a sense of that parking lot, which also doubled as a basketball court, basketball court for some of our active act of programming. We move those on a special basis. And then the backside of the building, handball courts here, I need a renovation. The 60 foot chain link fence needs to be renovated and replaced, pavement needs to be redone. And there's an open area here which we can actually repave and seal coat to add some additional recreation courts. Our kind of proposal from a site plan perspective, we are reconfiguring the interior of the building to consolidate the public access points where we engage the public with our recreation staff and hand out courts, equipment for the courts, basketballs on the west side, move the public restrooms to this area here to allow better access and create this kind of central corridor of circulation to the center of the space, repaving the courts on the front side and dedicating this space to full time active basketball, active recreation by doing site work on the outside of the building and site development to just add the parking to the outside edges. The building itself, I'll actually turn this over to Harriet Prove on our architecture team to discuss the building. Harriet?
Hi, I'm Harriet Prove. I'm with Central Park Conservancy. I'll present the building. I'm trying to figure out if I can access the slide.
I'll move forward.
Okay. So this is the existing building. Right now, we have two large sort of inefficient restrooms at either side of the building that interrupts the park operations space. The restrooms are difficult to access for people using either side of the space because they're distracted. On the east side of the courtyard, we are using it as a parking lot. And there's entrances on either side of the of the courtyard that allow for staff entrance. In order to sort of consolidate the space and make it more efficient, we we're gonna have to rearrange the interior program of the building, which will require a few modifications in the building envelope, which are circled in red. So the proposed. So in the proposed plan, we're consolidating the public program to the center of the breezeway, making it easy for people to access the amenities on either side, from either side of the building. We're providing fully accessible male, female, and gender neutral restrooms. The improved park operations space will be accessible from a new entrance on the east side of the building and two entrances at the back of the building for egress reasons. The new door at the front removes the need for staff entrances on the interior of the courtyard. The doors will be replaced by fixed windows, thereby eliminating the interruptions to the courtyard recreation space that the existing doors create. So this is the south elevation. The main change you'll see here is on the east side where the door is replacing the windows. So we can go to the next slide. I'll go through these one by one. So this is the existing southwest and southeast elevation. The southeast elevation will end up looking like the southwest elevation in the proposed project. Next slide. So this is just a drawing showing that update. Next slide. So these are the, a photo of the existing front courtyard windows. For the most part, we'll be recreating these. Currently, the design has a center panel of the existing windows is intended to be operable at the very top, but they haven't been functionally operable in decades. And because the courtyard is used for ball sports, it isn't feasible to have them open anyway. Therefore, we're proposing fixed windows with consistent panels across so that the side through panel will reflect the panels on either side. So next slide. So this is just showing the proposed. Next slide. So on the interior in the interior courtyard elevations, you can see in the bottom photo, there's the existing parking and there's the entrances that are used for staff. So the entrances here interrupt the space, so we're gonna replace those with windows. Let's go to the next slide. So in our plan, we're trying to align the windows with the existing windows along that facade to create a harmonious elevation. The the new windows will line with all the existing windows, the windows and the sills. So go to the next slide. So again, on this side, we're also replacing it with the same type of window style. Next slide. So our goal was basically to align all the glazing with the existing glazing, the sill with the existing sill, and then use the language of the existing door on the bottom panel of the windows. So next. So this is the back elevation, showing where we're replacing two existing windows with doors. The new doors will match the existing door on this facade. Next slide. This is the existing photos. The door that's shown is not actually accurate in terms of it's a boarded up panel that'll actually be glazing to match the historic. Okay, next slide. So this is just showing the elevation, showing the replacement door. Next slide. And again, showing the updated elevation with the new door. That's. So I'll pass it off to my colleague, Bob Rumsey.
So there's a, I'm just gonna go through some context on the site work to support park operations. This is the facility in the middle of the park. You can see its relationship to the building itself. And our operations staff actually are housed here in their vehicles and all their equipment to maintain the entire north end of the park, north of 97th Street for the most part. There's been some significant shifting in how we actually maintain the park. Are we are significantly advanced, replacing our typical fleet, our old fleet, I should say, of gas powered pickup trucks and large scale garbage trucks with smaller electric carts. They're both greener. They both take up less space, less noise. They're better to travel on very busy park paths. And a big part of our project is supporting site development to have charging facilities in these and secure secure storage areas overnight. This is our proposed plan. I'm gonna, existing site, I'm gonna take people through some existing photographs. There is on the west side of the building, an existing kind of outdoor compound area that contains some sea containers for our storage purposes and an existing paved parking area, existing charging on the west side of the building, some storage area here. And additionally, there's also some storage areas on the west side of the building itself. And I went through the other stuff earlier slides all the way through. The pictures, this is the west side of the building, the doors that were added in the 1930s, access to the west side operations space. We have a locker room in there. The storage area kind of bleeds out right into the park. Our proposal is actually to contain all of that in kind of defined storage areas on the east and west side of the building themselves. Get all the parking back there and then contain it, screen, define it, contain it, screen it. As you move around the building, this is the west side elevation itself, you can see existing chain link fence with charging area on the inside where we store the carts at night. There's lights actually that illuminate that at night from the outside of the building. And then looking from the, on the north side, looking south, you can see how our operations staff, it kind of leads right out to the path. So our proposal, Bob, go through the details of that, of how we contain that and prevent that connection between the storage area and circulation on the north side. And on the east side of the building, existing storage compound area that's adjacent to the building itself. This is actually access to the oil tank and the below grade oil room, oil room here. And I'm gonna turn it over to Bob now to kind of go through the proposal.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Bob Rumsey, the landscape architect with the Conservancy. I'm gonna request control here. I'm not sure I can make that work. Way I can.
Unfortunately, you all need to work with Christopher on this one.
Chris, no problem. Okay, Chris, very good. We'll go forward here. So this is our proposed site plan. The proposed improvements happen really primarily on the west and east sides of the building. And they will serve to define, contain, and screen the operations functions, creating an organized back of house that will coexist with the park and recreation users. I'll show in large plans for both the west and the east, but I first want to kind of talk about some of the the common primary site elements. The cart charging and storage areas on both sides will be defined by eight foot high black chain link fence. The steel storage containers Chris showed that are relocated from their highly visible location at the front of the building and distributed more discreetly through the areas on the backside in three distinct areas. And they're integrated into the fence line as well. The proposed lighting in these areas is low level, low height pole fixtures that are shielded and facing inward. They will replace the very bright, the existing bright, high glare outward facing security fixtures mounted to the building now. So all in all, will be an improvement, and I'll show you a cut sheet of those in a minute. And then on the perimeter of this entire improvements, the proposed facilities will be screened with planting improvements on the perimeter, and I'll go into those more in more detail. Some site items to note on this plan, in particular, at the northeast corner, the upper right part of the page, the cart travel, a cart access travelway will be created by relocating the existing fence line inward, westward from its current location. And then just to the east of that, an asphalt path in the landscape on the east side is very infrequently used, but has a bench seating area with important view and connection to the landscape to the east. The overall, this overall path will be removed, but the connection to the seating area will remain via a soft surface path, enhancing the bench user's experience. Next. Just.
Sorry.
Did you skip one? Oh, okay. The storage containers are eight foot high by eight feet wide. They're slightly downsized from the existing eight foot. Chris, can you go back?
It's a little bit of a delay. Bear with me.
I'm sorry. Okay, yep. Anyway, the the containers are downsized from the current eight foot six height. They're integrated into the fence line, and they'll be painted dark gray. Next.
Oops, sorry.
Looking for the lighting slide. There we go. So the proposed lights are eight feet high, inward facing, pole mounted fixtures, relatively low light, shielded. There are three on the west side, two on the east side, and they are painted black to integrate with the fencing. They'll be the same height as the fencing. Next. We're zooming into the west side of the building with the existing condition, existing site plan on the left and the proposed on the right. Starting at kind of the bottom of the page and working our way up, the parking area that exists now, the storage containers will be moved, that will be reclaimed for parking for standard size electric vehicles. Cart access will will be accessed out of that parking lot into the cart charging areas. The cart charging areas, as I've said before, has storage containers distributed throughout. The access path that Chris showed in that earlier photograph will be removed at the north side, and a planted landscape buffer will be created to screen that area from the park path. And they'll show up a few existing and proposed views, one from the north looking in and another coming up the path. So if you could go next, next slide, this is that same view Chris showed earlier, this area, that existing path will be that existing access out that existing access out into the park bath will be removed, this area will be organized and defined. Next slide. And then screened with plantings. Next. And then coming up that same path, but from the southwest, that's the existing view into that area will also be screened as well. Next slide. Going over to the east side, zooming in again, existing on your left, proposed on your right. Cart access will come in from the north, top of the page, into a cart charging area with storage flanking on the right hand side, that that storage will be integrated into the fence and screened. The grade at the southeast corner, the bottom right of the building slopes down relative to the rest of the east side of this building, making it lower than the finished floor of the building. And this necessitates the retaining wall along the south side, which is needed to create a level area and access into the locker room door at that south end of the building. I'll show you a couple of elevations, one from the south, letter A, and one from the east, letter B. This is the from the south, the existing is on the top, you can kind of see that corner of the building is where the grade rolls down and is lower than the rest. Jumping down to the proposed, the concrete wall on the east side of, sorry, on the right side of the page, that creates that level area. That wall is sort of stepped back behind the face of the building. It's topped with the chain link fence, we can actually limit the height of the fence here because using the wall and the fence combined to achieve our eight feet high. And then across the south face of the building is a stone wall, which will match the character of the building and the stone retaining wall that surrounds the basketball courts. And it will be topped with a picket guard, which matches the picket style fence in the front courtyard. Next slide. This is the east side. The existing is on top, you can give a sense of those boiler rooms below grade, you can see how that grade drops off as you go down on the right, and the left side of the page. So the proposed elevation, the concrete wall in the middle of the page creates that level cart area and creates access over via that stone, stone wall to the entrance. On top of the concrete, whoops, just, just really quickly here, Chris, I wanted to point out that the fencing here, six feet high, because we're, again, we're using the wall below and you can see the post lights integrated behind the fence are very discreet, you can barely see them, there's a label over on the right hand side of the page. That's really it, I'll show some existing and proposed views, so this is the existing face of that south, that south side of the building as it exists. Next. You'll note the doorway and that facade and the stone retaining wall across that, across that face, making that connection to the court, cart charging area beyond. That's a concrete wall that again steps back. This is an unfiltered view, just so you could see what that structure looks like. Next, Chris. Ultimately, it'll be planted, will be planted out and screened accordingly. Next. And this, the next view is kind of a more oblique angle from southeast, looking at more at the east side of the building. Next. You get a sense of how those, that planting will really screen those walls and fencing. And next. This is the proposed plan, that, just landing back on the proposed plan that wraps up our presentation.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Goldblum, yeah.
I just wanted to ask about that southeast corner, the cart charging area. Must that grade be flattened? Or, I mean, couldn't you park the carts on a little bit of a slope?
Well, part of it is to create the access into the building, right? Because, so we need to get up to that finished floor, so that, that connection happens at all at that same level.
Um, okay.
So you would need, you know, you wouldn't be, it wouldn't be accessible if that area was lower, you would not be able to get into that door except for a stair, a stairwell. So it's important that that remain accessible across that area.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Chan.
Yeah, I was going to raise the same question that Commissioner Goldblum just raised. That seems like a, if there's an alternative to the, to the intrusion into the park. The other question I have is in terms of what Harry presented earlier of changing those movable windows. Why did the new pattern change so much in compared to the original design of the window patterns?
The diagram that that is from is pretty diagrammatic, honestly. The windows will match basically exactly the existing windows, except for the one wall in where it shifts from an operable window to a fixed window. We're having a grill, the existing windows have a grill on it, that's like a thicker steel grill that's going to be replaced by lighter weight mesh. So it'll end up removing from the existing heavy grill of the, you know. So it might look different in the elevation, but it's not a significant change of the window.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing questions, any more questions right now, so we'll take testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Sonia Giar to take us through the testimony.
Great. So the first person that we have is Laura Varelli, Laura, I'll be promoting you to panelist. If you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
This is Laura Varelli, representing Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. Chair Carol and Honorable Commissioners. Central Park is one of New York City's largest and most beloved landmarks. And Friends appreciates the city's effort to improve every element of the park by making it more accessible and inclusive. As it stands, the North Meadow Center has been used to support park operations in an ad hoc manner resulting in an uncyclic landscape. The proposed alterations represent a significant improvement of this haphazard center. Friends Preservation Committee does not oppose the modification of masonry opening and infills. However, we take issue with excessive use of chain link fences, especially in areas where a taller fence isn't required around the storage and cart charging areas. The applicant should not rely on vegetation to hide this inappropriate element and should explore a more pleasing solution matching the existing detailed metal fence. Additionally, we question the use of containers for storage and would have hoped for a more permanent solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rebecca Brand. And I'll be promoting you to panelists now. If you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Rebecca Brand for Landmark West. The Certificate of Appropriateness Committee received a preview presentation of this application on June twenty second, which clarified many fine grained questions about this application. While in discussion, we have nominal concerns about fully supporting this proposal. Providing for the needs of park maintenance is essential. We support the environmental goals of upgrading to an electric service fleet and appreciate the related infrastructure this change will require. Although not in the presentation, we understand that the wiring will be provided to charging stations below grade and the stations themselves will be four inch square posts that rise thirty inches tall. Understanding these efforts, let our committed to further consider sustainability. Central Park serves as the lungs of Manhattan and the Conservancy is in a unique position to raise the standards for the Parks Department to adopt. We hope in the future, projects may consider the incorporation of solar panels, gray water recycling, and eventual adoption of more permeable paving solutions as standard practice. There are many eyes on Central Park and increased visibility of sustainable practices will influence others in their design decisions as well. Our one hesitation in fully supporting this application is the codification of trailer parks for everyday storage. Clearly not original to the park and intended as temporary solutions, these itinerant shipping containers are more at home on a bar ship or industrial port rather than a fixed element in a world-class scenic landmark. We hope for more appropriate solution for the storage of rakes and shovels could be devised. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee otherwise found this proposal a public benefit on all levels and supports approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Christina Conroy. And I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you can please unmute your mic and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the North Meadow Center is an early post Olmsted building added at a time when the principles of the Olmsted landscape were still generally understood. The building was set into a wooden peninsula in the meadow so that it would be a secondary feature and not dominate the landscape. Its dark rock faced stone facades pitched roof, multi light windows and doors recall features of the picturesque style favored by the original designers as being appropriate to the naturalistic landscape. The hard surface courts, which were added north of the building and the adjacent maintenance areas outside the footprint of the building are unfortunate later intrusions and ideally would be eliminated. The VSNY supports the proposed alterations to the building's windows and door openings. These remain in character and will not significantly affect the overall patterns of openings. We note the importance of matching materials and details of the historic windows and doors. Details are not provided in the presentation and we are concerned because of the commission's rules which treat buildings in scenic landmarks as if they were in historic districts. Now, we disagree with this approach. Scenic landmarks are not historic districts, their buildings are components of these singular individual works of art and changes should be held to a higher standard. We hope the final details for these features are held to such a standard. Now, we also have no objection to the change of the small service area for vehicle changing to the south as it will minimally alter the existing site. However, the permanent removal from the planted landscape of the larger areas to the east and west for cart charging and storage is another matter. Taking these spaces is unfortunate and would be completely inappropriate if it weren't for the fact that these areas are already degraded and used for maintenance operations. But permanent changes such as these must be done using appropriate materials and those are rock faced stone walls and metal picket fences matching historical examples on site. When he was Director of Capitol Projects of the Parks Department, the late Bronson Binger said of the reconstruction of the Olmsted Eastern Parkway, "There will be no visible concrete on this project." "We too believe exposed concrete and chain link fence enclosures have no place in Victorian romantic style parks." "As part of the project, must be revised to achieve appropriateness." "Planting out these features is a partial and unsatisfactory solution." Thank you.
Thank you. And so I do not see any other hands raised. And there's no one else signed up, I'll note that we received a statement from the Historic Districts Council that generally supports the application. And we also heard from several community boards, Manhattan Community Board Five recommends approval, noting that the stonework will be done with care to preserve the original look and match the existing material. And any original material removed from the building will be salvaged for future use. Manhattan Community Board Seven also recommends approval and is strongly in favor of this project, which they believe will benefit a large cross section of the public. And Manhattan Community Board Eleven also recommends approval. So with that, I'll turn it back to Chair Carol.
Great, thank you so much, and I, I think we do have some questions, but before we get to that, I'd just like to ask the applicant team if they'd like to respond to the comments that we've heard. You know, specifically, I think most of the comments were on the site work and the chain link versus metal fencing and the storage containers and the amount of paving, yeah.
I'll try to just respond quickly, on the issue of chain link fence, we we and in some degree to the detailing of the concrete, we see that as distinct detailing from the original character of the original implementation of the building and more aligned with the chain link fence around the recreational spaces to align with that, which is why we made that distinction. In terms of the height of the fence, you need eight foot fence to keep people out, we know that from experience, the carts are actually pretty vulnerable to be stolen, so eight foot fences is our height, in terms of the storage containers. We thought carefully about that, the idea that we are putting these things, taking them out of the front of house and as Bob characterized, spreading back of house space. The storage containers, as opposed to permanent architecture, we see as a more flexible solution. We see those as equipment, not as architecture. And as storage needs, just as the cart was once a pickup truck, as those storage sheets changed over time, those pieces of work can to respond and not be bound by permanent structures in the park.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin? Commissioner, yeah, there you go.
Yeah. I, yes, I think Christopher has pretty well addressed it. I wanted to see them go into more detail on the need for chain link and security, which was sort of obliquely referenced earlier on. And the issue that the vehicles, you know, were at some risk because that's what, and that's why they needed it, so that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other final questions?
Just a comment, I do agree with the testimony from the Victorian Society that as much as possible, ask the applicant to, to pay attention to those details.
Okay. All right, so if there are no other questions, then what, we'll go ahead and close the hearing and begin our discussion. All right, and Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Luttrell, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion, and so the work on the building includes enlarging and combining window openings and the insertion of new door infill and and then also installing windows with panels in other openings to accommodate the uses and the applicant has shown that there's been sort of a history of window and door location changes on the building. And then the site work, as we've seen, involves changing some pathing pathways and sort of organizing the back of house needs on some limited paving that would be surrounded by green space. And ultimately, it all includes some new fencing, both wrought iron and chain link light poles and and, and as this is at the planting, so we'll begin our discussion, Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one?
Thank you, thank you, Sarah. So I obviously, I agree with the access changes to provide the restroom facilities and the windows and door changes that are, are being done, I think are fine and I think all of these changes are really, for the most part, operational changes that I agree personally need, are needed for storage and screening and there, and I'm glad to see that they're using the electric vehicles and I think that unfortunately, things like chain link and lighting are needed for security to avoid the theft of these things and because you're in the north part of the park, it's not a terrifically secure area at night, you don't have you know, a lot of guard services or police presence or anything of that nature, so you know, and as Chris pointed out, most of these are really quite temporary in nature, it's not like they're, they're heavyweight installation, so I think for the most part, this site work is appropriate and will make the area look nicer to the public who is walking in that area during the daytime, so I think I can really approve these changes that they seem necessary and appropriate to me.
All right, thank you, and I think even where there are some new installations, they're going to be screened and there's significant new planting added again, to sort of clean up the surrounding views. Right, Commissioner Goldblum?
Thank you, yeah, my wife actually walks by this every day and it's an important part of the park for a lot of people. And it's very, it's an interestingly sighted space, it's so visible because it's kind of at the bottom of of a lot of hills that people kind of traverse. So it's very, you know, and with ball fields, it's very visible. That said, I think that as usual, the Conservancy is, is the epitome of a class act and, and they, their work is always sensitive, thoughtful, careful, meticulous. I think that the changes to the building itself are totally acceptable and appropriate. I think that the site changes to the paved areas are a demonstrable improvement to the layout and will make the relationship between the building and the landscape better. I think that the west cart charging area and associated landscape improvements are, are fine as drawn. I think that the west cart charging area and associated landscape improvements are, are fine as drawn. I think that the. East cart charging area. Should, they should work with staff to try to slope that down so that the grade change is minimized. They can use a ramp, they can use stairs, probably you do have an accessible means of access from the other side. If I'm not reading that wrong, which I could be. But I, and to the extent that there is exposed vertical retaining wall, surface or foundation wall surface. I think that they were intending to berm it. And if they weren't, they should consider that. So that the, there, there would be no permanently exposed concrete retaining wall surfaces or foundational surfaces. And I think the landscaping is all good, but I think we should really be viewing this generally. Where the landscaping changes and these are built artifacts. So I think we should allow them to stand on their own merits. I think that the use of chain link fence for the. Sides is totally appropriate. Let's face it, these were originally supposed to be manure yards and I doubt that we could do worse than that. So I think that it's totally appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with the comments from the colleagues. From Diana's comment that this is mostly operational modifications and. And Michael Goldblum's suggestions are excellent. I think there is, I think from the testimonies is about the concern is about. The, the chain link fence and we understand the need for security, but. The exposed concrete should be burned in or use the, the stone to, to, to be more appropriate. I'm hoping that these are temporary, like the storage that are, they are not permanent. And so that, that they're not, it do not inflict damage on this beautiful park.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi? Oh, sorry.
Yeah. I, I agree with the, with all the comments that have been stated. This is. Unglamorous back of house stuff, but really important and. I do think it's been a very well thought out. The change to the windows makes sense to me. Adding doors for access in the buildings. Seems right. The car charging areas seem to work. I'm always an advocate in all parks for adding more restroom access, you know, better access and larger restrooms. And. You know, the changes to the pathway seem well thought out as, as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Well, while I. I have four, every time I have to say yes to a chain link fence. This one seems to be peculiarly appropriate. And I think this project is, I agree with my fellow commissioners, it's, it's driven by. You know, they're, they're the function and actual needs of the Parks Department and its users. It's blends nicely in every respect and it has no negative impact. So reluctantly on the fence, it's acceptable as is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I'm in agreement with everything that's been said. I support this proposal.
Okay, so I think we, we have enough to support it as is, but Commissioner Goldblum did make a suggestion about the. Sort of topography of the charging area and the, to the extent that there's a retaining wall integrating that into the landscape. So. Why don't we go ahead and make a motion to support it and ask that they continue to work with the staff to refine the topographical changes? We'll leave it open like that, if that's okay with everybody. So Commissioner Chapin, would you make that motion?
Thank you, Sarah. I will attempt to do so and you'll assist if necessary. A matter of a binding report for the Borough of Manhattan, LP 2210603, Central Park, North Meadow Center. A building constructed circa nineteen ten within an English romantic style public park designed in eighteen fifty seven by Frederick Law Olmsted and Calvert-Boppes. Application is to modify masonry openings, replace fill and install retaining wall, storage enclosures, paving and fence. I recommend issuing a positive report finding that the proposed modifications to the shed building, hold on a minute, I just lost it, I better. Get back to it. Hold on a minute. Sorry.
Okay.
I'm working on a different computer, so I've got different, I lost the proposal just a minute. Sorry, it's all the way down here. Okay. Finding that the proposed modifications to the shed building will help support its continued adaptive reuse for park operations. And public programming that the enlargement and continuation, combination of select window openings. Will be harmonious with the existing pattern of punched openings. At the facades in terms of placement, size and form and will not significantly alter the facade's character. That the proposed entrance infill will be in keeping with entrance fill, infill throughout the building. In terms of materials, proportions, details and finish. With the proposed windows above fixed wood panels. Replacing select entrance infill will replicate the proportions, scale, configuration. Meet materials and finishes of the existing windows, thereby helping to support a unified appearance at these facades. That the proposed wood panels below the windows will be simply designed and harmonious with the style of the buildings. And will recall the presence of former entrances. That the proposed window assemblies without transoms at the south facing courtyard facade. Will be only a slight variation from the circa nineteen thirties assemblies, thereby maintaining the overall character and unity of the design. That the proposed site work will facilitate relocating visual obstructions, including parked vehicles and storage containers. To less prominent areas of the site. And will restore a more ordered appearance to the front courtyard and at the landscaping near the front of the building. That the retaining walls will be the minimum height and footprint necessary to level the existing sloped terrain for pavement. That the wrought iron fencing in front of the front east wing. Will help provide fall protection, will be compatible with the building in terms of its footprint and match the existing adjoining fencing at the building in terms of the materials, design and details. That the proposed chain link fencing within the courtyard will address the safety hazard. Match the existing fencing and design and height and be symmetrically placed. In relation to the existing fence with minimal obstructions to views of the building. That the increase in paving will remain compatibly scaled with the building and will be in conjunction with removing unneeded modern pathways. At the perimeter of the site, thereby helping to consolidate the paving in less prominent areas and support the primacy of the landscape. That the proposed storage enclosures, paving. Retaining walls, fencing, site furniture and lamppost security lighting at the site and rear yards will be simply detailed, properly scaled. Utilizing materials and finishes, which will blend with their context and largely, be largely screened from public view. Public view thorough viewers by dense evergreen plantings. And that the, none of the work will disrupt a significant vista or result in loss of mature, mature trees. And that the applicant will work with staff. To explore any topographical changes and.
To limit to the extent possible, the retaining walls, presence of the retaining.
The extent possible retaining walls and changes in grade.
Right. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
With seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passed.
Right, that's approved. Thank you very much. And that concludes our public hearing and public meeting today, June twenty eighth. Thank you all for participating and thank you Commissioners for your hard work as always. And we'll see you on July twelfth.
Thank you, everybody.